So tonight I'm bringing to you really three text amendments and then there's some cleanup that we want to do with some redundant numbering and so forth. So the first one is standardizing the election, the elected official filing fee. Failure to file campaign finance reports and prohibit the use of city logos. So those are the three that I really want to bring with you and propose some changes. The first one is going to be the election filing fee. Every two years, you know, the city has a municipal election. Those that wish to participate in municipal election must file a declaration of candidacy and pay a filing fee with the city reporter. The filing fee can be found on the consolidated fee schedule. And currently, as stated in our consolidated fee schedule, the filing fee to run for city council is $25. But to run for a mayoral seat is $50. And my request to the council tonight is to request the state to standardize the filing fee to $50 for both city council and mayoral. And the reason for this is it's intended to offset the costs associated with the election. Consistent fee structure and ensures all candidates are contributing equally. And and I prepared for Kayleen, Councilmember Whitelaw, to ask me some questions. So I'm going to just throw these out. So part of this filing fee helps.
If you remember right, we didn't have a filing fee before.
We didn't.
We have that because I joined the council.
I appreciate that. The filing fee actually helps with the candidate guide that I put together, which is the binder that I put together for all of you. It helps with meet the candidate night and also with the software that we have for financial disclosures, which is Easy Vote. So if you're wondering where that fee, where the funds go to, it helps go toward to offset the costs of those things. So that's what I'm bringing you tonight for the election filing fee. Do you want to discuss this one or you want me just to move through all of them?
I I'm not sure that the city putting on the meet the candidates night is the appropriate group to put on and meet the candidates. So I don't know that I think it should be paying for that, but.
I don't think she said meet the candidates, wasn't it the?
That was part of what she said.
Discussion when they get us all together and tell us how to run.
The candidate tonight that we put on, we did the first one this last year.
I know we did, but I'm not sure that that's our role.
And there are other areas that that was just a couple of areas that help that fee helps support those areas.
Chad, why did we decide and Zach, why did we have them there before?
I didn't. And I'm trying to remember why we changed the wire. It was different. I can't remember.
Well, we had it. It was nothing. When I ran, it was nothing.
And then the next time they ran it was twenty five?
Yeah, that our council is twenty five and mayor was fifty, but I can't remember rationale. I think there should be more.
Just having a dollar amount helps to keep somebody from filing to run on a whimsy and and it helps to reduce the amount of work that the the Tangi's office may have been.
I'm sorry.
What do other cities charge?
Anywhere from nothing to a hundred dollars.
Okay, so that's not.
But I think Ken, I think you're right. Now that now that you mentioned that, I think that was probably the rationale for imposing a filing fee was to just make sure that the person was
That was part of it.
Serious.
That was part of it. And the other part was we were extending funds. At first, we didn't get a book. We got a map, but the map plus money and it took time to do it. So that was a point. So Tangi doesn't book it, which does cost a lot.
To me, the fifty dollars really does offset the work that your office does to prepare us and to get the tools that we need to do that. To me, that justifies, I mean, it probably costs more than than what you do than what it's the filing fee is.
It's five dollars a question. I used fifty dollars up pretty quickly.
That's a good point, right? The we we say it goes toward these things to offset it, but really it's a drop in the bucket.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, we're talking, how many candidates did it have last year and maybe statewide?
Eleven?
Eleven citywide. Pretending that the mayor candidates and the council candidates paid the same thing and they all paid fifty bucks. That's $550. That guy needs to so so knowing like the justification for it is one thing, but pretending that like, well, we wouldn't have these books if we didn't pay this. That's not true. We still have, we still get all the stuff. We could just come out of the general fund instead of and it does. This just goes into the general fund and bring whatever the expense is going to come. So there's there's justification for it for sure. There's justification making a lot higher if you wanted everything to be in for service and not come out of the general fund. Or not come out of property tax or sales tax or but yes, it can be justified. So it's just a matter of what should the justification be? I mean, it it's a fee for service, yes, but it's not purely the fee for the the service justifies. So unless we're going to talk about raising it to like four hundred dollars, can you hear something ridiculous like that? I think it's, I think it's, I think it's better to have another reason than just, well, it it offsets the cost, right? Because it doesn't cost it. Little tiny thing. It's a drop in the bucket. So.
For me, the real reason to do it is to limit the amount of work that has been done in Tangi's office by having a flood of candidates who are just applying on account of and I don't know if that's a problem or not. Was it a problem when there was when the filing fee was zero?
I wasn't in the city reporters.
Right, for our, we had I'm talking the first one there was zero.
Oh, it was zero.
In twenty thirteen, we had eleven.
There were eight.
Corbin, just sorry to interject here. I have seen in a neighboring city where artificially low filing fee allowed candidates to put their names on the ballots with intent of not running, but flooding the ballot with so many wings of disruptive thoughts.
Yeah, well, that didn't happen in the range towards voting.
So the theory is this will stop that. That's a theory.
They can still
We don't stop it, but
Let's slow down.
Well, it's just like
Really, the only question is, do we want to vote? Can't be for everyone. She needs four people to say yes.
I'm okay with that.
We have enough in favor to put that on an agenda for a future discussion. Next time the fiscal gets up for a vote. Alan, this is as loud as I can talk. I'm sorry.
Okay, we need to turn that off.
I have since the man who just had his air conditioner worked on today. Well, it's we're down at Alan's computer for microphone now, so.
Oh, what? Alan died?
Mike in the ceiling.
Yep.
We'll give that up for a minute till we all
We have a microphone we can throw in the middle.
Just continue.
All right, next up.
The next step is failure to file. This those that have declared to run in a municipal election are required to file financial disclosures during the election. There are times when a candidate fails to file their final, uh, final disclosures after a primary or a general election. So I I'll explain a little bit deeper. So someone that doesn't win a general election still has to file a financial disclosure at the very end. We have a couple of people that have run in the past that have never filed their last financial disclosure. And then they choose to run again in the election the next year. So what I am proposing, well, the request, the request that I'm giving to is a candidate who's at least thirty days. I'm sorry, thirty calendar days late in the filing, any campaign finance report with the city reporter is not qualified to run in any declaration of candidacy until all of the financial reports have been filed and accepted by the city reporter. So what I'm asking is, we change it to say, you know, Fred can't run again until I get the financial disclosures that he missed. He cannot declare. And and that's that's why I'm bringing you to you tonight for that. And the reason for that is accountability, transparency, compliance, fairness, and administrative efficiency. I feel very strongly about the transparency, the compliance. I think there needs to be some accountability there. And right now, I I there's really nothing that says that they can't run in another election. Uh, we don't have any penalty. We don't have any, you know, anything in our code. So I'm just asking that maybe we could change that.
Seems gentle and fair to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Can I have a question?
You may.
No. Thank you. Okay, now you can.
Okay, thank you. How much more work, you probably see where I'm going with this. But how much more? So let's hypothetically say, because I know this happened when I ran the first time and there was a person that ran in the district race and he didn't file the final final campaign and then filed the next. Given our software and those kind of things, how much more of and the fact that they could be filing two years later? How much extra work does that cause for your office to reopen the software, make them allow them to finish the campaign report and those kind of things? The reason why I'm asking that is if if they, let's say they're filing two years later, right? Is there a, is there a mess? And should we be charging them money on a consolidated fee schedule to pay for the time that at the time that it was supposed to be done? It was easy. And now, two years later or four years later, it's taking how much more time to do that? That's my question.
So the current software that we have, Easy Vote, it will flag, I can flag that individual showing that they are missing a financial report. And it will alert me and it will alert them when they try to go into that system that they are missing a financial report. Um, it's not, it doesn't create a lot more work for me other than maybe just I have to send them a message telling them, you know, you know, giving them the code saying, you know, as per this code, you know, I need you to make up any financial reports that you haven't submitted before you can declare. Um, so it doesn't create much more work for me. And I will tell you that in the state code, it does state in there that we could charge a fifty dollar penalty if the council chooses to do so. So it's up to you.
They have to write that on their financial.
Duncan, if if they come in at four forty five on the last day to file and they've got outstanding, can they then complain?
That's my question. Is it strong enough? Because right now, if we do this, they can still come in the day before and go, oh, shoot, four years ago, I forgot to hurry. Fill it up now. So it's really, they're not, they're still being penalized because they've been filled out the day before.
Yeah, well, this is written. If they filled it out the day before or had enough time at the end of the day to get it all done and file their application before five. I mean, that's a risk they could take. But yeah, this co-section would allow that. But Tangi as city recorder would have to approve that that really is up to date and complete, right?
I'm just saying like right now.
I just don't want them to be able to come in at four forty five and say, but I was here and file and
No, it's
But right now, it still doesn't penalize them because they can still come in four years later. They could walk in, Tangi could go, oh, you never filled this out. Well, then they could fill it out that day and then they're good. So they're doing a penalty.
No, they're not.
So I guess the question is, do we, the state code apparently allows us
The one pill that we have right now is that they can't run until they do. And all we really want them to do
But yeah, that's the goal is that. It's not to like prohibit them. It's like, come on, just do the work.
Yeah.
You want to show that you deserve to be. We want somebody who's allowed something like that to fester for four years, running for city council.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm in both camps.
So I'm okay with how it is. I'm okay with not having the, it's just as long as this is clear to anybody who wants to run, that has to happen.
Well, I understand. Do we make it stronger? So four years from now, if they show up, let's say a week before the filing and say, sorry, you didn't fill out your thing four years ago, you can't run.
However, many days it was before you showed files and this, those are the days
I'm just
So you can run again.
I'm just saying, if you didn't fill it up four years ago.
You're right in three years, so you can't run for three years. See you in three.
And what if you won, though? What if you, what if you win? Keep you in office? You don't file that last report?
Right now, I don't know. I think Angie gets on everybody before that could happen.
Yeah, or it goes to my wronging up.
I mean, that is, that is a valid question.
Yeah.
Is what, what if if somebody wins and choose it for some reason, chose not to file, are we saying? I mean, if we're going to address code, will we address that? Is that something we need to address that says it's because state statute says you won and take office, right?
Is Well, that that's the attempt. This coach change is to close that potential legal loophole and make it clear that we can't even file without that. Without this code amendment, if there is kind of a legal ambiguity.
Yeah, but they could still, you can still say they show, you can't file because you didn't file this. And then a day later, they can file. So there's really no
But that's, but the whole point is to get that accountability and transparency. That that's what it's doing. And if they like, oh, I have filed and then they filed, then great. We now we have the transparency.
You're okay if they wait four years to file?
Well, their opponent wants to use that against them.
Yeah, they, that adds up to the vote.
So then there's really no penalty.
Well, the, the, we're not here for the penalty. We're just showing like, hey, we just want the transparency accountability.
So going back, going back to Councilmember Whitelaw is
You can say Kayleen.
Going back to, going back to my esteemed colleague across the table.
My esteemed, my esteemed colleague from Wester.
Yeah. Is this bulletproof enough that if somebody walked in? I'm going to say more even later than four forty five because we've never had anybody walk in at four fifty five to file for office.
I was close.
Somebody walks in at four fifty five on that Tuesday afternoon or whatever day that might be, and we say, sorry, you haven't turned in your campaign report. You're not eligible to file until it's complete. Is that bulletproof enough for them? Is that bulletproof enough for the city, sorry, to say you've got the next four minutes and thirty seconds. I just opened up the portal. You got four, you got three minutes and thirty five seconds because we got to do the other paperwork after. Is that enough to prevent us from being sued in state court because we prevented them from filing based on twenty eight?
A council member, you also have that you've got to file by five P M sharp. If you haven't got your paperwork in at five P M sharp. So you could run it, I think, into an issue where you're going to get a campaign disclosure and your notice of declaration has to be in by five colon O O O O.
Well, it says that that's the, the ordinance is drafted, says city recorder. I think it should say may not instead of shall not. These is may is the normally the negative. Um, but the city recorder can't accept any declaration of candidacy filed after the end of the filing period. So it's five point and and it's filed with the recorder by five o'clock on the last day of the posted filing period. What does first off, what does filing mean? So I'm I'm asking that question. What does filing mean? Does filing mean signing the declaration of candidacy and taking the oath? What does, what does filing? What is the act of filing that has to be done by five o'clock mean? First, and then second, is this bulletproof that it, you know, gonna have the, the, the same thing that I'm going to throw, I'm going to throw another city under the bus. Are we going to have the same thing that's happened to Draper City twice with the late filing of election reports? Are we going to have the same thing for a candidacy pilot? That's my question.
Yeah, and I wanted to just hand up down that because for me, the principle of the philosophy behind it goes that like when you show up to vote, you know, actually polls close at eight. But if you're in line at seven fifty nine, you can be running from the parking lot, you can get to that end of the line at seven fifty nine. You get a vote even if it's eight thirty, right? By the time you get up to the boat and the polls close at eight. So our polls
No, you can't. If that line is eight o'clock, they go to the end of the line, they close it, you're right at that spot.
But if you run up there at seven fifty nine.
You're in line.
You're in line. You're right at eight.
Yeah, and you don't vote until eight forty five. You still gotta vote, even though the polls close at eight, right? So I would love to put into this code to address this very thing, just say, keep all that. This is great. And just add a line that if they are present at the filing location or something like that at five P M on the last day, you will allow them to finish their application and file. But you gotta be here.
Yeah, because right now the lines thirteen through fifteen make it clear that they have to use the form. We could probably add, we filled out, but then it says, and the filing fee, right? What I would recommend is that all of that, what, that they're present and all of that is complete by five o'clock, right? So they can't be filling out the form at five oh two or three. But if they come and they're there at four fifty nine and there's three or four people at the city recorder's desk and it's not till five oh five that they hey, I have a filled out form and I've got a filing fee ready to go. But we don't want them filling out the form after that, right? It's already complete.
Right, they, but they've got to be here. They gotta be here with the intent to file before the polls close.
What about an idea of the being compliant with this has to be done within a week or five business days before the official end of filing date.
We could have that.
That way, someone coming in the last day, we go, no, you needed to take care of this a week ago.
And you're not eligible to
You're not eligible. You're done. That would, that would close that loop real quickly.
I like that a lot. I was going to suggest twenty four hours.
I could add to that, too. Um, the software that I have Easy Vote, I can actually schedule for an email to go out to those that have missing financial disclosures. So automatically, I know you were saying like, you know, legally, if I send something to them, you know, in January, telling them, you know, you know, reminding them every year in January, hey, we're still missing your financial disclosure for this, this and this. You know, you, according to this code, and I list the code out and tell them, they can't say that they never you know.
But putting that complacency thing a certain date before the filing stops us from having to worry about someone coming in at
Yeah.
four fifty five and going, here we go.
Because then all we have to do is worry about the completed filing that they're supposed to do anyway.
Right.
And we, and we're not, because that, because like you say, Duncan, lines thirteen through fifteen, it says, at the time of the filing of the declaration, candidates using the form, each candidate should pay the filing fee. Well, if 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 we really wanted to be complete, you would also say, and make sure that all your campaign file reports are complete.
Yeah.
So Complacency.
And or that you're in compliance with the campaign reporting. So I would say that thirteen through fifteen has to have a, a, a third part that says you have to be in compliance with the campaign election section. And I agree with Bob and Ken, it needs to be sooner than the last day that, you know, the filing.
But I would want to ask Tangi, because if we can set anything, we can say five days, we can say a week, we can say a month. To me, for your office, a month prior or or a couple of weeks is probably better. But I think you should give us an idea of what you feel.
I think thirty days is reasonable.
And and here's the thing, too, is if it's bulletproof or not, right?
I don't know.
And and I'm not, I'm not worried about that, right? Like, if the only, the only way that we get into trouble, the the worst case scenario, if it's not bulletproof, somebody says they get on the ballot. Oh, no. Right? I mean, that's, that's the worst case scenario, right? If we don't cross every T and dot every I, even though we're trying to. That's the worst case scenario. So I'm okay with.
Yeah, and the due process issues for overcome because Tangi can program in, you said, certain reminders, right? Like
Yeah.
ninety days in advance, sixty days in advance, forty five days in advance. So by the time we get to the thirty days, we can prove that they have multiple notices.
Right, and the email address is one they gave us so they can't tell us, oh, never check that email. You give us that.
So and every time they log into Easy Vote, it notifies me when someone logs into it. So I can say, well, on this day, you logged in and you can see here that you're you can see that you didn't file your financial disclosure.
Unless Tangi is bugging me. I don't usually log into Easy Vote.
What's my, is in the Easy Vote? Oh, wait a minute, the last
Last report was still mine.
I just want you to know that I
So real quick, all the discussion has been about candidacy, running on voting years. So now we get back to the mayor and the city council that we file annually. Does that pertain to us as well? I think it would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So once again, there's no urgency. I could not have done mine this year and I can wait until four years from now to turn it in.
You can, if you want to be that kind of person.
Or Tangi is just going to keep bugging you until we realize that your email isn't
I'm just saying, there's, there's no urgency to get it in on time.
Other than you might not find the records later, right?
I'm just putting that out there. There's, there's no urgency for any of us to get it done.
But the fact is, it would get done. And right now, Tangi's dealing with it, not getting it.
Tangi puts, because of the, because of the way the software and the link, everybody can see if somebody filed their report
On time.
On time. And so
Right, because you can see the dates right now.
If you didn't file, then the residents can say, well, yeah, that, that particular city council member is a slug for
For never filing.
For never filing. What are they hiding? And that's Well, and that was the whole reason for the filing of that report anyway.
Right.
Was to prevent what happened in another city where a candidate filed their end of their, 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 their final report for the general election. And then the next time they had to file a report, they had like seventy thousand dollars in their campaign fund and everybody's, where did the money come from? And there was no, you didn't have to justify it.
So that's the transparency that we want.
And that was transparent. That's why that report was put in the, I think we got some good direction.
Is that, is that why our city is doing annual reports?
Yeah.
Because that's not required by state laws.
That's why we do it, is to prevent what happened in, in Corbin's former employer. All right, what's next?
I think you got good direction.
Thank you. Uh, the third is a prohibit use of city logos. So if you all remember in the last, in the last session, our city logo was used. Um, and so my request is to prohibit the use of the city logo. And the reason, uh, uh, the city logo is not used for political advantage, maintains the integrity and neutrality of municipal symbols, ensures all candidates have equal opportunities with leverage, leveraging city res, without leveraging city resources. Um, so I I really just would like us to have I really just would like us to have something that says that we can't use our city logo um in an election, so that's what I'm asking.
Would you know how I.
Bob, tell us a little about it.
I think the question is, is there anyone against?
I would say is there a penalty?
That's that's what my question was gonna be, is what's the penalty?
Other than, oops, I already mailed it out. Sorry.
Oh, I wasn't supposed to do that.
Well, but it can, i- if we say it's against the rules, then she can put it in the rulebook, right? It wasn't in the rulebook, it didn't say that.
Not putting signs in certain places, but people with that, that's what I'm saying. This to me is a lot bigger than the signs in bad places.
So.
But this I think they'll comply with where signs.
I would have thought you wouldn't even need this rule.
So my my question.
If you've never ran for something.
Is is the city, is the city logo trademarked?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
But there's no penalty to use it.
I I will say out that. Other cities that have trademarked, they've been challenged, we haven't faced it, I don't know anybody legally that has faced it.
It's a public domain.
There are questions about the enforceability. Of a trademark of items and it's being a logo like that.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say, it's a public, I mean.
I know Georgia got in, Georgia got in trouble for copyright and then Utah, or for their their Georgia code.
Copyrighting Green Bay logo?
No, they.
Oh, wait, not University of Georgia, sorry.
But they were universities, or Georgia, Georgia was trying to copyright their their state statutes. And it was like, they they lost that on.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's, 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 there's another question, another what if question, too, that generates, too, is. If you're an incumbent running again, can you say, I've been on the West Jordan City Council, can you use a picture of you on the dais, cuz the logos. Behind it. This would specifically prohibit it then.
Absolutely.
And that's what I mean, I think that's probably taking it a step too far if it prohibits that, because that's. A public place, anybody can go into our chamber and take a pictures of themselves, right?
Which is basically.
I've done that on campaign materials. Before, I did that before I was elected.
Oh, I'm sure there's like maybe some pictures of shirts like this.
Right, or yeah, you bring your shirt.
You know, kind of.
Pixel out the logo?
True, yeah, actually, I do, I do, I deal with this every day, we have to pixelize out all the logos, in fact, our video that I just went out. We had to actually go through and pixelize all the NASCAR logos off the cars, because it was that strict, and I won't pay with the. Prohibiting that and completely eliminating the fact of any of our logos at all, like it's, it's a standard thing.
And to me, it doesn't matter. I don't, I don't think that wins or loses an election, and if they stand by the city park and it has West Jordan there. I don't see the issue, and I don't want people to not run because they don't have a marketing degree and they don't have the software to take it all out of me.
We could, we could, we could put it as a standalone feature. The logo could have been used as a standalone entity in your.
Like the printed logo on print or internet.
I I think the issue you're trying to, the issue you're trying to prevent is people running as if they are endorsed by the city.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, and that's what I mean by a standalone logo.
So the fact that I'm in a city park and it says West Jordan on the sign behind me, or I'm wearing a West Jordan shirt because I am a city council member.
Or even if you took a picture in there.
Or you was to take a picture there, cuz anybody can do that, right? But putting your, putting the city logo, grabbing it and putting it on the.
Like a letterhead kind of usage.
Then then now you're implying endorsement.
And that, and that's where I hit on the, the one, when my opponent did that, that was very much endorsing looking.
Yeah, and when Chad's woman did it.
And this is where that, this is where that is coming from, so I don't have that happen again, so. Uh, you know, I'm thinking of the city, you know, you're in the city park and you see the sign behind that says West Jordan City. I'm not so. You know, I don't know how you feel about that, but I'm not so worried about that, but actually putting the city logo on something and mailing it out or hanging a sign that has the city logo on it. I I I don't agree with that at all.
But I think it's really an education piece, I don't think your opponent, I don't think Chad's opponent, they hadn't ran for office, I don't think they.
My, my opponent says that his whole piece was put together by uh by the partner. And.
This would eliminate that because it's clearly, and it'll be in the instructions.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying, he.
And I would be adding it to the the um packet that I give you all.
Yeah.
I I tend.
Because if we can figure out the the legal wording, I think a standalone use of the logo is what we're, what we're selling.
I mean, I tend to agree with that, cuz when you think about it, if you're. If for some reason, you're you're doing a campaign video, you know. You know, I I could see somebody like Dirk doing a campaign video out in front of the sign, that 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 on on Mountain View that says, welcome to West Jordan City. And somebody saying, hi, welcome to West Jordan City, I'm running for mayor type thing, right? You could see that standing there doing that with the city sign behind you. You could see that in the city park, you could see that um. West Jordan's, you know, over here in the diet, and you can do that, so.
And we did have a candidate that did his video for our website, who was standing in front of the city sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's like Disney doesn't get mad at you if you film something in their heart that you're enjoying your time, but they wouldn't get mad at you if you put the Disneyland logo.
Yep.
On something you mailed out to people.
Yeah, I mean, if you were standing at Disneyland with the cat, with the castle behind you, that's different than using the mouse ears, right?
And and friends using their trademark logo.
I think the bottom line on this one, I think we're all kind of in the same, same place, is that we're. We need a little more legal background on this one to draw that line between. Uh, an incidentally use and a endorsement implying use. And I don't know how you draw that, and we need a penalty. Right, otherwise it's just words on a page.
True. Yeah, that's the original penalties and.
And when you say penalty, Chair Jacob, what are you, what are your thoughts on that?
I I don't know, a consequence, neither needs.
Like what are the consequences when you put a sign on, on a park?
Your sign is taken.
Taken, taken, and you have to pay a penalty to get it back. So.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a fine, maybe it's. I don't know, I don't know.
Allows us to issue a citation for any administrative violation of code, right?
Right.
So technically, technically, we could, we could technically, we technically. We've time to walk through that, but technically, we could issue a citation for that.
A civil citation.
A civil citation for that, and and.
But you could do something where per.
But it's not just code enforcement that can write tickets for the administrative violations, right? And so. That could be something that the city attorney's office reviews and says, we're gonna let Casey. Issue an administrative citation because violate whatever the heck we wanna do, right, we can do that.
But if you put it on a per infringement basis, and someone sent out a thousand mailers.
That's per.
And then it was fifty dollars times a thousand. That will stop someone right away from. Yeah, but I'm, and I just threw out a number, but I'm just saying, doing that, what you want is to stop.
Yes, I like the per infringement.
Per infringement is a way, cuz, cuz I'm done here right now, if someone could put whatever they want on the mailer that hit. You know, the day the ballots went out, and go, oh, I'm so sorry, none of those voters know that this was wrong. And that person could win an election and go, well, I guess, where's my slap on the wrist, I'm now.
But that occurs all the time with mailers and lots of things, so I don't know.
But when, how does it stop? Because someone comes up with something that stops it. And if everyone just.
Hasn't stopped yet.
But I don't know what the penalty is.
But I I like per infringement.
Oh, yeah, but is that, can you go on a video?
What?
Does that have any views on a video, or is it video one view?
Cuz they, if they put that on there, no, it's uh, it's.
Your video got five thousand hits on YouTube.
I think we're gonna be terrible going after infringement, because. I get your point, there's a thousand mailer, but we chart a thousand bucks.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that.
So, but.
I can tell you that that's how the uh.
Our.
The the big companies will go after you in their, their infringement. They'll say how many times that went out. How many times we were infringed, a lot more than fifty dollars.
Yeah, but this is against someone that's running to serve the city, I think it's a little different than a corporation.
And I I I think, look, they're turning to me very soon, I'm sure my home city to face this issue. Do a little background and see if they're, what they know about our mothers.
And and I'm, I'm okay with it, cuz I'm okay with just putting it, then it can be enforced under Title sixteen and.
This one will come back, yeah, but we gotta set that before we do this.
Yeah, I know this is kind of a different. Separate subject, but the signs, uh, people just place them indiscriminately. Uh, without any, cuz a sign costs three, four bucks or whatever you paid for it. And those, and they just like, no, it's good, I'll just let it, let it languish in my dumpster.
Yeah, no one's gonna pay fifty dollars to get the three dollar sign.
And so, um.
And if they do, I don't want them on this council.
The math.
Yes, I'd like to see a little more. Fight on that as well.
Yeah, that's, talk for another day, but hopefully we've given you some stuff, could.
Yes, um, and then, as I mentioned at the beginning. Uh, other election code amendments, uh, deletion of redundant numbering and other stylistic changes, there's just some language that needs some formatting consistency. Um, and compliance with uh Utah election laws.
Yeah, that's all fine, yeah.
And you guys marked the one that uh. That's number green, which is the name.
Yeah.
The, the.
Go instead of the shall.
Yep.
Yeah, generally may is the negative and shall is a positive, may not is the negative. Shall is a positive. And in fact, if you look in fifteen, one fifteen eight, it says may not. And 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 so we just need to be consistent always, really.
Yeah.
I have a couple of, based on the the PDF file, I've got a couple of comments on just some. Like grammar cleaning up or something, I'll send it to Alan. You can take a look at it and decide if it works anything.
Excellent, thank you for that discussion. Do you have anything, um, you're gonna introduce this one to me?
Yeah, now we're good to move on to the next one?
I believe so.
All right, so, the next one is um. Planning, we're gonna plan for the twenty twenty five election, let's see if I can get this to go. So we're gonna be talking about um. Rate choice voting, it is the responsibility of the elections officer to ask the legislative body. If in twenty twenty five, the elec, if they want the election in twenty twenty five, if they wanna participate in municipal. Uh, alternative voting method pilot program. Um. It's commonly known as rate choice voting, and I I wasn't quite sure how in depth to go, I know we have, you know, council members and. Most of you have heard all of this before, so I'm just gonna run through this, um.
And Tangi, just to say, you know, we do have two experts on rate choice voting in the room. We got, I'll just introduce, but Colleen Potter is former mayor of Weber. And she's also the executive director of Rate Choice Voting, the nonprofit that is um advocating for this. And Josh Daniels, who's, oh, Utah County Clerk. Um, what else can you form the last?
Lots of things, administered rate choice elections, though.
He did, yeah, so he, these guys know a lot, too, so. I I asked them to be ready, if you need any backup or presentation or whatever, we've got some good question answers.
Okay, thank you, um. So I, and like I said, I wasn't quite sure how in depth to go, cuz I know we we do have new uh council members. Um, so I'll just go through, um, just a couple of things that I have, um. The purpose of the discussion um is one uh decision that we need to make is, are we gonna participate in twenty twenty five? Um, and. Uh, sorry, I got a little bit behind myself here. What is the pilot program, it's commonly known as ranked choice voting or instant runoff voting. This method allows voters to rank candidates in order of preference, helping to eliminate the need for separate runoff elections. It's sponsored and overseen by the Lieutenant Governor's Office. Um, and it's qualified under uh twenty eight four six oh two. Uh, which provides legal framework for this alternative voting method. Um. Why now, again, it's the legislative bodies uh needs to decide if they wanna opt in to the um. This election. Um. As my office will need time to prepare and educate the public, and that's why I'm bringing it to you so so early, is because if you do decide to opt in. I want plenty of time to uh educate our public, um, it will take time to educate a hundred and seventeen thousand people. Um, and so. And then also I will need the um financial support to provide education to the public. Um. Rank choice voting began in January first of two thousand and nineteen, and it will end in Dan- January first of two thousand and twenty six. It's available in odd number of years, and twenty twenty five is the last election year for the program. Um, participation for us is optional, so we can opt in um to participate, we, and we don't have to. Oh, I'm sorry, guys, I'm trying to run to me.
Yeah, in fact, it was supposed to, Ken, earlier, we're gonna shut it down early and we let it stay.
Requirements and timeline, uh, responsibility is that. So city election officer is to present the option of participation, our legal requirement, um. May first of twenty twenty five is the deadline uh to for us to do a notice of intent to participate or withdraw from the um program. You can opt in, but then we have to tell mayors to opt out if we, if we decided to not participate. I did a little cost analysis. Um. Traditional election in twenty twenty three was two hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety five dollars. And that was a primary and a general election for four council seats and a mayoral seat. Uh, estimated, and I got these numbers from the county. I just kind of went off of what they provided for us, the cost for that same election would have cost the city a hundred and sixty four thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars. Um, we would save from not having to have a primary election.
Except that would cost us sixty, it would cost us uh fifty six thousand, seven hundred dollars to uh educate the public, right?
And I have, the the makeup would be, I would need, you know, the funds to educate the public.
Initially, one year, one year, or one a month.
Initially, there's not a big statement, but there could be down the road.
There could be, yes.
Assuming that the Utah legislature signs and rates it voting out.
So also, I would like you to keep in mind that, um. Education, there was some funding available or on in the pilot program. And that that fund, those funds are no longer available, I called the Lieutenant Governor's Office and. And I was told that there are no more funds, so I would need, you know. The financial support to do that, and I'm. You know, after looking at it, I'm thinking of setting up, you know, if I send out one pamphlet to every household, you know, I think we're looking. Thirty thousand dollars just to send out a pamphlet to hit every household.
You said it just voting households or all households?
Well, I would say, to me, it would be households.
You'd probably need.
Even the home, even the homes that don't vote.
But you don't know if they're going to vote in that election.
You don't know if they're gonna register.
Cuz they could register after you sent your ballot.
So roughly, I'm, then me putting together and talking to my constituents in the other cities. I think we need anywhere from sixty to sixty five thousand dollars.
You were low.
Was it too far?
That's a, that's a rough guess, that's kind of where I put it with our population, but I, you know, I I can't say for sure what it would cost us, but about that.
But it's still just one election.
So the twenty twenty five election data, so if I went off the same numbers that I had from the county for our twenty twenty. Um, three election. Um, traditional election, two, two hundred and twenty thousand, same number, four council seats, we did rank choice voting. A hundred, you know, best estimated, a hundred and sixty four. Um, I'm sorry, I'm going on the wrong slide.
But.
I'm sorry, I am.
Tangi, that also assumes. And you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time we looked at ranked choice voting. The county's ranked choice voting would only allow for ten candidates. So if I'm looking forward to the twenty twenty five election without, with, with three candidates at large. It is very conceivable. That we could have more than ten candidates, and we still have to have a primary. And then a general using ranked choice voting because we have a limit on the number of candidates.
Correct. It's ten or eleven.
So we don't, we already beat it that way.
Salt Lake County uses Dominion, and there have been, there's cities that have had more than ten candidates. You just couldn't choose more than ten options. So they can vote, a bunch of people provide six, seven, nine, ten, and there might be twelve candidates. So you don't have to vote for all twelve, you just get to vote for ten.
You know, but that screws up the rank choice because you can't rank them all.
Well, there's lots of different versions of ranked choice voting, some would say they're on top three, some would say they're top five, some would say top.
So if I go over this cost analysis for twenty twenty five, sorry, I found the wrong screen. Uh, there will be three council seats, uh, because they're at large. So we estimate a traditional election with eight hundred and sixty-five thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. Yes, I did, yes, sorry, I had one and one and one the other. Uh, ranked choice voting estimate a hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand for the same election. And then we would just have to think that there would be an additional cost for education again. So I'm, you know, I'm coming to you and really just coming so we have an early conversation. That if you do decide to opt in, that you would please allow me plenty of time to educate our residents. Um, I have talked to, you know, my constituents in other cities. And there are four, there are some that are for, there are some that against. But all of them in common, education was the big thing. Education was a thing that they struggled with due, you know, financially, and. It's the older generation, you know, we, we can do education online, you know, through the web. But the older generation, they really struggle with electronics, and you know, we hear it every day in customer service, you know. We need more, you know, we wanna have something in front of us, you know, paper, you know, they come in to talk to us every month. So I just asked that we have a discussion, we have it early. And that if you do decide, you give me plenty of time to educate our residents, because that's important to me.
That's fine, that's very.
We'll look at the cost analysis next year if you wash because of the.
Yeah, it doesn't say the same.
You know, and that's just me estimating, I, you know, I don't.
No, I, I think, no, I think not that far off. Yeah, with the education, it's gonna be the same cost.
Because the last time, the last time we talked about this.
Close enough.
Three or four years ago, you were talking forty or fifty thousand dollars for education, so you're not that far off.
I know, I'll just put out two for history, saying, back to when this was first introduced at the state, the pilot program was approved. We opted in. West Jordan as a city opted in, said, we wanna try this. The county, Salt Lake County Clerk at the time, or the different county clerk that we have now, said, I'm not gonna do it.
But we opted in knowing that we can change our mind.
Right, and we can still change our mind too.
That was all, it was like, opt in now or you can't opt in ever.
Yeah, and then we said, no, we don't wanna do it. So in order to, you're right, it had to do with the.
Our last election, we have twelve cities. Um, that opted in, um. Twelve, six of those were in Salt Lake County. Now, some of them, like Magna, didn't participate, they didn't have the numbers. I don't know how many of these, um, cities actually held a ranked choice election, because, um, I tried to get information from the county. And, um.
Wasn't Draper and Sandy on there too?
No, Draper and Sandy were in twenty twenty one.
What, what, should they decide about this?
Yes.
Sandy Mayer will never go to ranked choice again. And she won, she won with ranked choice, and maybe we're better wise.
So that is ranked.
Well, a question for, for me is, do we look at this considering what saves the city money? Or what is the best way for our residents to vote?
Yes.
But, but I mean, what, what is the more important to, not yes?
Oh, well, if, if the money's a wash.
I wanna do what's best for the citizens.
Mayor, can I add something that? I am neutral on this, I will do whatever you all decide. Um, I, one of my concerns that I have is. We go into the municipal election, we educate our residents on ranked choice voting. Then we take them back to a traditional election for a state or presidential election, and then we go back to rank. I think we have to keep that in mind because it's gonna, it's gonna create a lot of confusion.
Well, it's, it's still confusing, we, you can make that same argument, that we're voting for three. And next year when you vote for president and county clerk and whatever else, you're gonna go number one. Is that confusing?
Well, we're gonna have a discussion here, maybe if we want three or one.
Well, yeah, that's, that's a separate discussion too.
Well, I don't want to go ranked choice.
To, uh, to Bob's question though, is to what is. Better, what is, what is a better way to vote? Is the plurality election that we have now a better way to vote than a ranked choice election? What, what are the advantages or disadvantages of doing a ranked choice election from a voter's point of view, not from a candidate's point of view?
And for me, it comes out of those who've had to campaign and be a part of. You know, that, uh, uh, the, uh, at-large thing.
As a candidate at large, I would support ranked choice voting, because going through primary and then it's, and then the, the November election, that's a lot, that's a lot, so selfishly, ranked choice voting.
Except, except we were as close for ranked four years, three and a half years ago. You were as close to ranked choice voting as you can get, and I hate it.
Because, oh, everyone's running in one and four.
And here's the reason why I, I don't like ranked, first off. I, I, I saw candidates go through ranked choice voting, up close and personal, in Draper. And it was miserable. So I was telling, based on personal perspective, I don't like ranked choice voting at all. The other, the other reason why I don't like ranked choice voting in this, is because our pool of three last year was this way. Last time we had the at-large election. I had counsel, I had counsel candidates. Who. You can't, you can't, you can't challenge. You can't, and, and this will be some of it for later discussion either, you can't challenge a person and call them out. Because as soon as you do. They will campaign against you.
How's that different with any other election?
Because if you're running against two people, it's you or them, right? But if you've got, if you've got multiple candidates, so I'll give you the perfect example. That when we had our primary, when we had our primary canvas. Um, the last election over here in Council Chamber. I had one of the candidates who came to, I, I was talking to, and he said to me. Which was my advantage, by the way. He told me, he said, you know what, when I was out campaigning. And people asked me, who else should I vote for in the other, in the election? He said, I want, I told them to vote for Kelvin and Pamela because they were nice to me.
But that can happen in ranked choice voting too.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, is in ranked choice voting, what, what you're doing is you're, you're pitting. All the candidates that in one pool, and what you've done is a candidate who says. Either pick the weakest candidate as number two. Or whatever, because you're starting to num- play the numbers game in the ranked choice voting. And so it's like, well, yeah, vote for me, but who else should I vote for? Yeah, vote for them and them. And as opposed to, um, you know, really those other people standing on their own, you know what I'm saying? So. But if, but if I, but if I were mean to him, he's campaigning for somebody else. Not only is he campaigning for him, he's telling people, don't vote for Kelvin, don't vote for this guy. And is that what we really want, is people telling people not to vote for people in the pool?
But that happened when I was running for mayor, I would be asked. Well, if you become our mayor, who would you rather work with for council members, so. I think that's just, I think that's.
But there, but there is some of that. The other, the other problem that I have.
Actually, most of the time I told them I can work with anyone.
The other, the other problem that I have with ranked choice voting. Is that, let's say you have eight people on the ballot, and use eight specifically. But let's say you have eight people on the ballot. Kent Shelton votes for all eight, one through eight. Bob Adore only votes one through four. Kent Shelton votes are worth more than Bob Adore's votes.
Yeah, they are.
Because, because of the ballot exhaustion, then.
First, we've got a vote, but it had five.
Yeah, Kelvin, that's no different than if you have a primary with four people. I vote for my guy who I want to win, and he doesn't get through the primary, so I choose not to vote in the general election. That's, that's the same thing, except you're just doing it at the same time.
Maybe, but.
Or, or you have a state like Georgia where you have all the people on the ballot, and the top two get a runoff, probably a fifty percent. You know, it's, it's the same thing, well, the, the runoff election turnout is a lot lower than the.
You know.
Than the general election turnout, right? So those are, those votes count, those votes were, whatever. They did, they counted as many times as they wanted them to count, as that voter wants them.
But do people understand that? And do they understand that, um, do they understand that if I don't vote for all eight people, or all six people, or all whatever. My vote is worth less than the next guy who does and votes for them all. Because of the ballot exhaustion, it's a valid argument, and, and. I, that's part of the reason, look, I, I believe in one person, one vote. And, you know, they get a voting, they get a vote for the person, but the, the fact of the matter is, you know, that's where I stand.
And I'd like to dovetail off of that. I personally have done, I did some research on this, and. I would be more in favor, and I know this is not an option, but I'd be more in favor of something called approval voting. Does anybody clear what that is?
It's basically what we have now, except you'd vote for three, you'd only get one winner, for example.
Yeah, exactly, like you can vote, if there's, say there's a pool of four people, and there's only one seat available, you could vote. Or up to three or, or two, or even just one. Doesn't matter, or if a person chose to vote for all four because they approve of all four candidates, they could even do that, but, uh, that doesn't make a lot of sense, but.
Yeah, they just add up the total of votes.
Yeah, so approval voting, uh, it doesn't, doesn't discard. Anyone's vote just because their candidate didn't make it through the first round.
What I'm saying is, you do that anyway. With ranked choice voting or with a primary and then a general. You can, you can either keep voting once you're guys eliminated, or you cannot keep voting when you're guys eliminated. If I voted for Gloria in the primary for District Four, I didn't vote District Four, I'm a District. But if I voted for Gloria in the primary, and she got eliminated in the primary, and I didn't vote for, for Dave in the general. My vote in primary wasn't wasted, right? I, I had my say. And I chose not to continue. In ranked choice voting. If, if, if all seven of us were in ranked choice voting, and I say I approve, or I, I, I think Zach's the best, because that's what I would say, and. And then I like Bob, and then I like Chad, or whatever, and I stop at a certain point, so I just pull names out of a hat.
Pamela would be next, and I would be at the bottom. I don't know where you'd rank these two.
Well, Tammy, what's asked tonight, are we going to bring this back and vote on, or?
Well, the question is.
Well, are there four, are there four? Jer, could you ask if there are four that want this?
This is not her responsibility of asking you the question.
Is there anything that you'd like to add? I wanna ask these guys, because they're pros, but we can probably start presenting a bunch of crap.
Just a couple of quick things. There's a study that maybe we can map with us recently, we looked at our traditional voting versus ranked choice. Have a number of votes that were counted, so typically, when I ran for council, everyone was like, tell everyone to only vote for you, because if they vote for other people, it could hurt you. Which we all know, and that's a lot of votes, see? And they saw that typically fifteen percent more votes are counted in ranked choice, because you can't vote for someone else. If I say, well, pick me first, but if I'm out, it doesn't matter, you're not gonna hurt me by voting for every single other person. So typically, you find that it's bullet voting, where people just vote for one, is not something that happens in ranked choice voting. You get more voter expression with ranked choice because it can help or hurt your own candidate, which is ranked the one. Um, the other thing I think is important to think about is. I, I, there is, I know that for approval voting, it hasn't been used much in my country, I think that's in two places. But it basically is like ranked choice voting, oh, you're not ranked. You say, here's anyone that I would be okay with, so whether it's so-and-so who's, I like their last name. Or whether it's this former person that I really support, they get the same weight of your vote. So people who've made hard decisions, like you guys who are incumbents, there are people that are gonna go, man, I don't like him because I voted for that tax or that. I'm not gonna vote for that. But John Smith, he's a nice guy, I like Smith, so I'm gonna vote for that. So as an incumbent, I would never want approval voting, because I feel like someone who's kind of milquetoast is gonna win. Because everyone on all sides of their issues is gonna vote, well, they're pretty nice, they didn't do anything, you know, they didn't take a side on somebody's shit.
He's right. Especially at the beginning, they would just vote everyone not an incumbent.
Right, so for example, I'm running against Colleen, and we could both, I could put Colleen tenth and me first, and she could put me tenth and first. So it's kind of the same thing, isn't it, as far as numbers go, because although, although it is ranked.
I wouldn't pick a tenth. I wouldn't put you first, I'd be like Zach, I'd be first, you would be fifteen out of ten.
What number one thing is. I, I, I'm usually both, because I'm not saying just you or me, I, I'm saying, I don't want to put me, someone put her tenth. And she's gonna go, I don't want Chad to be, he's trying to be a tenth. So it, it's still.
How can you vote, but you go.
I'm not saying you would, I'm just putting a scenario out, but some people could do that.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, some people could, but if you, if I was running for council and I didn't want you to lead me, I'm not voting for you at all.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this is kind of the same thing, like, I'm not gonna vote for Colleen, so she can get an extra vote.
Yeah.
Or in ranked choice, I'm gonna put her tenth, so she doesn't get enough votes to beat her.
Are you comparing approval or the current system?
I'm just saying, they kind of do, it's kind of the same way.
Because the, the current system, there's a perverse incentive to only put one name, you could have three spots, you could have three votes.
I understand that.
Or this perverse incentive to only.
But I'm also saying, in ranked choice, you can have an incentive to put a person tenth that you're running against.
Yeah, if you put somebody tenth, the chances that your tenth place vote matters are really slim.
Right, so I just made it so cheating against you, well.
Sure, but there, there's a huge advantage to saying, I'm gonna pick one name. So, so you're gonna throw away two votes, you can vote for three names, but you can only vote for one name. It's like, well, yeah, because three people are gonna win, and if Johnny Popular is one of my three names, well, he's probably gonna. Push ahead of, you know, Suzie in the middle, right? And, and the problem with that, voting, um, so we've run some tests in real life voting scenarios, where we told the voters, look. Only rank the ones you approve of. And then we counted it under approval and under ranked choice. And what ended up happening was the second most popular winner got iced out in approval voting. So that winner was somewhat controversial, but they had a, like a sixty percent coalition that really, really liked them. But they had like a twenty percent coalition that hated them. And so there's this black ball effect. A, a good example, kind of fictional, Batman. Every movie and cartoon about Batman, Batman's always controversial, because he's rough. He's, you know, he's, he's dangerous, and there's always this like interesting thing going on in Gotham, which is like, we need Batman, but we're afraid of him. If you were to put Batman into an approval voting situation, twenty percent are like, I'm afraid of Batman, that as dangerous as unhinged, so I'm not approving of Batman. So you end up with some sort of milquetoast person, and even though like sixty-five percent of people are like, no, we really want Batman. So you end up with some sort of milquetoast person, and even though like sixty-five percent of people are like, no, we really want Batman. Commissioner Gordon ends up winning, Batman ends up losing, right? Um, and so we see this in the head-to-head approval versus ranked choice. Ranked choice is a good hybrid, where you can approve of or rank all the candidates you prefer. But the ones you prefer the most have the greatest advantage of winning your vote. And so, you know, you can rank your last choice last, or you can simply not rank your last choice. But the thing that's really helpful about ranked choice is, your first choice always matters most, until your first choice either wins, or we're done counting. You know, because maybe your first choice is so outside the norm, that your vote's always going to be in the, in the sort of minority group, right? Um, but one thing we've learned through some surveys, is that voters who use a ranked choice ballot. By and large, like it, sixty, seventy, eighty-five percent, we've done different polls, and, um. Generally speaking, it doesn't change the outcome significantly, but it does change the outcome when races are close. Um, but I think the thing that it does best, is it changes the narrative and the, the culture of the election. The election is no longer A versus B, red versus blue, let's draw lines and divide and conquer. It's the true variation of public policy, which is, there's these complicated decisions, there's trade-offs, everything exists on a spectrum. You like some things more than you like other things. I think that's a truer way of thinking about the issues you deal with in city government. And so it's an easier way to campaign to your voters, which is that you're not campaigning Republican, Democrat, on this side or that side of an issue. You're campaigning on some trade-offs of different competing skills and, and, and expertise that you have. And maybe some preferences on issues that are various levels of gray, not black and white, right? And so I think it changes the culture and the dialogue about the election, and, uh, and voters appreciate that, and that's what we found in survey data, so.
It also takes away that gaming, where you think, oh, do I vote for them? I'm afraid I might be wasting my vote. In ranked choice voting, you say, I don't know if they have a chance, but if I vote for them and they're out, it doesn't matter, because then my second choice will flies. It also takes away the, you know, if we can get someone to run, that's going to take away some votes here, there's not gaming, it's just being that huge.
Spoiler.
In ranked choice voting, there's no, you can't give a spoiler, because you just rank them all down the road, like, they're out, they're out. They have to have as broad as any of us support.
That's, uh, if this were a question about using ranked choice voting in partisan election. That right there is exactly why I would be one hundred percent all over it. Because I, I struggle with the two-part system. Um, and of course, that's not a conversation for here.
We sort of had, they had a pseudo partisan election last time, almost, kind of, right? It, it worked out that way. But, yeah, to that point, um, just looking at some famous elections, right, nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six. You have, um, no, ninety-two.
Well, ninety-six as well, Dole.
Yeah, but ninety-two, you have Ross Perot, who took votes away from George Bush in his swing states, and gave the election to Al Gore. That didn't happen with ranked choice voting, because you could put Ross Perot one, George Bush two, and Bill Clinton three. Once Ross Perot's eliminated, your votes go to George Bush, and he gets the most. Um, in two thousand, if you're not a Republican, and you don't like that, in two thousand. You had Pat Buchanan in Florida took votes away.
Bush and Gore.
It was Bush and Gore, that were close, and the third-party tickets may have ranked Gore second. It was, uh, it was.
It was the.
The green guy, Ralph Nader. Nader took votes away from Gore in Florida, more than the two hundred or whatever the final, you know, thing was. If they'd have been able to rank Al Gore third, second on their ballot, Al Gore would have won Florida.
He would have won.
And he won, and he won the popular vote. So, I mean, whether you like Republicans or Democrats, there's a good example on, on either side of the issue.
One last thing, I think it's important to note, one of the things Josh did is, they went to a living center and found a bunch of senior citizens, and they passed out ballots with no instruction. They had no higher error rate than they do on any other election, and that's consistent. Um, same thing with the junior high, like, we kind of get all worked up on, this is confusing, but everyone knows how to rank. I want macaroni and cheese, now I'm five years old, I want a hot dog, you know, you know how to rank our preferences. And we find with voter surveys is that they tend to, you know, ninety-plus percent, instructions were clear, I understood my ballot, I trusted it. And that tends to be something that people just intuitively, no, it's definitely important to education, but some cities, like in Eber, when we get it, we put it in our regular city newsletter. You know, we have a little thing in our farmer's market, there's a lot of education done by, you know, organizations like others that doesn't cost you anything. That is not as big of a hurdle as you might think for an expense when you get it.
I asked you about Eber City specifically, I saw. Because I have a friend of mine who lives in Eber City, basically campaigned with her. I saw some campaign materials that was printing, uh, for Eber City candidates, and there was a coalition of candidates who put.
Vote for all three of us, rank us for second.
Yes, I didn't understand the, why they were doing it, because I didn't know it was ranked choice, but can you talk about how that affects you in the election? When there's a coalition of candidates?
Well, it's probably similar to what you guys experienced, where some people are all aligned, and so what they did is they pooled their resources, and put out flyers, and said, hey, rank us for second, third. Then you get like-minded candidates who are all against this or for this. And, um, there were, there was another group that had four people and said, rank us. And the one with four, three of those won, and the one with three, the one that. It was just a strategy for them, as a way that they would, if people like me, I'll tell them that they should probably bring you also. It doesn't always work, but some people do that.
This is what brings up a little bit of a concern for me, though, is that merit thing, but now you're not so much campaigning on your merits, but. Uh, you know, the idea of teaching people how to rank, that's, that's fine, but teaching people how to look for. Make sure you're voting for the people you really want, and not falling into the candidates who have figured out how to work the system. That, that becomes a different.
We're not running for council, some people came to me and said, hey, the same thing, they said, we should do this together, we can, you know, share the cross-players, and we did do that, with our issues on there. And so I don't think it's much different, because they have their issues on there, and they said, we're against the bypass, vote for us three. You know, and then other people are like, we're for the down-town development, and we did the same thing when I was doing it in a traditional election, where. It was just a way of saying, you know, we're like-minded, we're helping each other, and we're saving money.
I just know some people figure out a way to.
But that's, and that's something unique to ranked choice voting, though. And that happened in every election. When I first ran in twenty thirteen, we had a, a mayor and two council candidates running as a, as a group.
Oh, and we had that in the last.
We had this in the last.
I have, I have another que- uh, question, or perhaps concern that I'd like to have addressed, and that is. Um, in a municipal election, let's, let's take this next one that's coming up. There's going to be a number of candidates, uh, three incumbents, perhaps, uh, if everyone decides to run again. So you might have seven, eight, nine people running all on one ballot, and my question is, is there any concern about. A person. Not ranking all their vote, or not ranking all of them, they're just going to vote the ones that they know, perhaps. Uh, because they're just wore out trying to research candidate after candidate after candidate. Because, do we have any concerns about, about, about T?
How, how would, how would that be different, though, than if it is how it is now, vote for up to three? And there's twelve candidates.
Well, in the primaries, vote for up to six.
You have.
Vote for three to six. Okay, sorry.
On, uh, you at least break it up with the primary, like in the current system. But, um, maybe it's, maybe it's not, maybe you're not concerned about it.
But in that primary, you have the same issue.
So, because the question is, am I going to bring this back to council, or are they for the month?
Yeah, that's, that's the que- the question is, do we want to, yeah, do we want to start down this path, knowing that we have until May. To change our minds, and going back to the other, to the existing system. It is easy, it's just a matter of not doing it, you know?
Well, if, if we waited until May to backtrack on this, it would have cost the city.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that. I would hope that it, I would hope that, much like, you know, Michigan's budget, that if we've gotten to this point, gotten to that point. Our idea, our opinions are more or less. I, it's no secret that I'm a proponent of ranked choice voting, I like it. I've, I've been a fan of it, I voted for it when we discussed it six years ago, five years.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of it in partisan races, but I'm not yet convinced that it's. That, that ours, our municipal race is a place where it happens.
But do we have four that want to move on with this, or not?
I'm, I'm vacillating personally, I'm not sure where I'm at, as well.
Two plus two halves.
So you're for it, you're for it, where are you?
I'm for a primary, so I guess I'm against it.
Okay, and you're against?
I'm, I think I'm.
You and I are vacillating.
So you two want to bring it back?
I'm more on the devil than.
And I'm super on the fence, I don't know why, but I'm, I'm, I'm struggling.
You want more knowledge?
You want more knowledge? I don't see four.
Where, where I would, where I would have made my final pitch, um, is, if you're on the fence. Let it proceed, knowing that there's still an out.
All right, we're not saying yes tonight.
No, we're not saying yes.
In other, in other words, let it, let it continue, let, let's continue down the path, let Tandy figure out exactly what it's going to cost for education or things, and. Maybe what help there is from the nonprofit out there that has supported it, but if we don't have four, why would we waste your time?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if I'm asking the.
All right, I'll, I'll say yes for now.
Right.
But it's not a strong answer.
You know, I'm a no, I, I think we're.
I think we've got three and five.
And four no's, so counting to the next step.
I'm grateful that we had the discussion, though, our last election, we didn't even bring it up.
I brought it up.
We brought it up at the very last minute.
I brought it up, I brought it up in August.
August, August twenty-fourth is the last part.
I, that's, my concern is the education, so I keep bringing it to you early every year, so you'll give me enough time to educate the public, so.
I appreciate.
I promise I did bring it to you.
Well, even with the study that's coming out in a couple of weeks, and without seeing that study, you're still a no?
Well, no one has convinced me to change my vote, so at this point, if the vote comes in a week from now, and something has come this way in my vote, then a yes, but. No one did anything that made me just think that this is the way to go.
Can I ask one more question of, uh, Mr. Lee? In twenty twenty-two, you suggested that perhaps we could ask our residents in a survey. Whether we should do this or not. And my question is, did that question go out to the residents?
No, because the council made a decision not to do so, we did not end up asking the residents.
Okay.
This is, this is the last year that we can do this, uh, under the pilot program, assuming the legislature doesn't extend that. There will be bills to extend that this next session, there will be bills to not extend it, or kill it, or whatever. So, just so you know, there's strong opinions of the legislature on both sides. We don't know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that this is the last time we could ever do it, because we don't know. Under the current system, what we do know, this is our last chance. Cool little thing to address what Bob just said about not being convinced at this point, but being possibly futurely conceivable. If you're on the prevailing side, and then actually this, and you change your mind, you can bring it back up for recompensation, if you have to put it back on the agenda.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, like I said, we got till May, but education's going to be, uh, going to be key to do, we can't, we can't wait till May. And then, by the way, that's changing the filing period from first week of June to sometime.
On this twelfth through the nineteenth, does the filing, well, the tentative, from what I was told from the Lieutenant Governor's office.
They have a primary, so it shoots. Yeah, sure.
I've got our dates already.
So you saw that with, uh, Salt Lake City last year, their mayoral election, they didn't file until mid-August.
I'll go there and announce her.
It, well, yeah, they all did, December. It kind of makes for a Kamala Harris-style campaign, and get it all nice and dense down in the, nevermind, all right.
And that's all I have.
So I have, okay, thank you, thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, Trin.
Yes, you're welcome to stick around if you want to.
What about the?
There's, that's on. She's not, she's not.
Our next item.
Send you an email.
It's fine, it just.
All right. Yeah. Um, all right, next item on the agenda is our discussion on adjustments to at-large capital seats in capital districts. Kellen, do you want to start this one off?
Well, this, this started the discussion decades.
We started meetings the other minute ago.
Yeah, it started. But, they, the, the question that came up was on the at-large seats. Do we want to do what the county does and designate at-large seat A? At-large B, seat B, at-large seat C, so that it's. Makes it comparable with the rest of the city election, because the mayor runs head-to-head against people. All the districts run head-to-head against the people, but in the at-large. It's the three people plus everybody else that runs, and it's a different type of election. And so the question is, would it be beneficial? Probably more beneficial if we went to a ranked choice voting. But would it be beneficial to designate the council seats A, B, and C, and so then. Uh, for example, Kayleen, let's just say Kayleen's in council seat A, I'm in B, Pamela's in C, and then if somebody wants to run. Um, they, they're actually picking, I'm running against Pamela, I'm running against Kayleen, I'm running against Kelvin. Because I'm better than they are type thing. No, you know, as opposed to the pool that makes it semi-ranked choice, makes it semi-ranked choice voting, so that's.
How does that get set up, though? Because then I'm going to file at the last minute.
Yeah.
Because I want to be able to choose who I'm running against.
And it turns into like district versus at-large.
I would want you to win again, so I wouldn't want to be running against you.
We, but if you look at the county, if you look at the way the county does it. If the, the, the people in the seat, and, and, and would, would you switch and say, I'm. And I'm voting, I'm, I'm in council seat A now, and I'm going to switch to council seat B?
But the county doesn't offset, they do do the offset, because. But.
So what you're saying is, we don't want, uh, incumbents having to run against each other, or choosing to run against each other.
Well, to me, if you're setting this up, then you get to come in and file and say, I want to run for A, B, or C.
Until the last minute.
And I wait a whole hour. And that could set up that, that A could have no one running against them, and C could have four running against them.
Yeah, but we just set it up in advance, and say, say, uh, Councilmember Wyatt Locke is seat A, you know, like.
Yeah, he would, he would all run three, three.
Yeah.
But you're filing your candidacy for the next election, so she might be seat A now, but she could run for seat B next year.
Right.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're not.
I think, I think unless it's offset like the county is, this would create more confusion, and harder for Tandy.
This is, if, can I say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is how I see this playing out, to be honest. Uh, Declaration Week, Alex and I will be just gung-ho ready for everybody to come declare, and no one's going to come till Friday at four fifty.
Yeah, forty-five.
And we're going to say, look and say, who's running in each one, and then you guys are going to want to declare, and I have to have you all declared by five o'clock. It's going to create.
Yes.
That's how I see it, what.
Well, that's exactly what I would do.
Yeah, I like the idea, I like the idea behind being able to go up against someone, but.
But I think practicality and thus are offsets, like the county is.
It works in a district.
Yeah.
Kellen had the thought.
Yes.
You may want to just, so this, this topic has two items, number one was the A, B, C, number two. Uh, similarly, is five districts and two at-large, but alternating election cycles, and it may be beneficial to talk about all of that.
So, so here's, here's the solution to that problem, and it's the solution that the county does. The county, we can't do this, nice if we could do this, it would be a legislature that would have law especially for us, but. The county gets six-year terms for their at-large, and four-year terms for their districts. There are six-year terms at-large, they do that so they can have A, B, C, and none of them.
Yeah, that, that's what, what happened.
That makes some sense to me. That makes some sense to me.
And and I like that idea. I especially like it wherever we're gonna do ranked choice voting, because then, you know, have these multiple winner seats. And ranked choice voting, I think multiple winner seats is kinda messy.
That's I will say that's almost exactly. That's one of the two biggest reasons why I.
Well, that's what happened with Drager with the multiple seats. He got way messing with both.
Exactly, and I and I and I don't disagree with that necessarily, and it's probably because I just don't understand and have it really filled my mind. But if we did go to five districts and two at-large, we could save three districts and one at-large. And run them together, and then the other two districts and the other at-large could run together with the mayor.
And have four.
We have four and four. This would be a similar election to what we had when we ran the first time for the two-year term when we were changing the form of government. Um we had an at-large seat, we had the district seats, and we had the mayor all at the same time, right? I remember walking past the house and seeing my sign, your sign, and Dirk's sign all in the same house on the same stake.
That was on a mistake.
You could have. For three different seats.
But with that, then, are you saying like a third of the city would be A, a third would be B?
No, 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 that would be just a district. No, you'd only you'd only have two council members, you know, council number A and council number, two at-large councils.
So then, though, right now I have four people on this council that. I vote.
Or you wouldn't.
And I wouldn't, and I want to always have a majority.
And I want to vote for two of them to be congressmen, but I don't get that choice.
I know, but here I here I have that.
Still get three, that's a majority.
No, it isn't.
You get three.
Four as a majority for this council.
Three still.
You get three and the mayor.
The mayor has to vote on the council.
He wants to vote on the council.
Well, he doesn't get to in our council governors.
And that and that's a philosophical thing.
Yeah, I would I would I would say it's for me, it's a definite no. We did them all at the same time, even though I like the idea of A, B, C. But it would just be ridiculous in the people putting out signs and stuff like that. We'd have a hundred signs, but you wouldn't know. Who is against who. And you know, you're seeing that, you know, for seat A, that would take education to even understand what that meant when I'm seeing C, A, C, B, C, and.
Well, in in general, I should be able to vote for your district. And at large, and the mayor.
Yeah, in in the one that you go down to number two. That's what I'm saying. Number one, yeah, to me, well, doesn't, I I don't like the way it looks. The other thing I didn't like in the rank thing, what I liked about a primary was you had a bunch of people going after. But once they were out, now the public only had to put up with a couple of people. So that's that was my other reason to say. Just so you know, my two things.
Basically, Bob, the the real reason is you wanted you want an accurate poll in the middle of the elections, but you know, we're in the stands with the voters.
But no, but I'm just saying, I I I like less confusing with all the signs and stuff like that, and that. The primary took a lot of things away and made it easier. I think this A, B, and C at the same time would just be confusing to now have to look at. Yeah, okay, oh, so it's it's an A, but I have to vote both A, B, and C. So now I have to go out and look at everyone's signs. And start making, you know, or start really paying attention to a lot more than just, I gotta just find the three people I like.
Is that is that different, though? I mean, any given, even your election, you got fifteen things on the ballot. You got a president, you got a governor, you got a senator, you got a state legislature, you got a congressman.
I uh. I'm I'm concerned with the cities, what I've been elected to be concerned with, not about all the other.
I'd like to put some uh input on this. If. Let's let's say I'm uh somebody who's interested in running for an at-large seat. And the reason I'm interested in it is because an at-large member of the council really ticked me off. And I'm super ticked off. And so I'm gonna run against that person. But now I'm I'm just running against a field. And I can't as easily hold that at-large council member. Responsible for their or accountable for decisions they've made in their seat, in their office. Because I'm just running against a field of candidates.
But you can still say, don't vote for this guy because I don't like him.
Of course. But you could still end up on the council if you won and that person won. You could end up on the council and and your whole point of running against them is now moved. Uh because you weren't. You were not able to effectively hold.
Never had a campaign, you got it backwards.
And then what you end up doing is you've made it, you've made a pure enemy on the new council and.
That's always.
And then you get elected back on the council, become friends.
You weren't talking about me and you.
I really like having the majority of the council that I have a chance to vote for.
That's an excellent point.
Because I don't want it to be, because I need four for something to pass. And if I've only got three that I can vote in or out. Then I.
And you can't hold people responsible as a voter.
See, and 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 my perception is, it doesn't matter, you can still talk to all seven.
You can't.
You can't say, well, I only voted for those three, so that poor guy, he's not gonna listen to me. That's not true. Like, you're 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 an at-large, right? So every, well, we all know that. But what I'm trying to what I'm trying to say is, although you are at-large, how many people contact you first? Because most of them contact their districts first, because they go, oh, he's district one, oh, he's district two. So do I feel a difference now in the district than I did in the at-large a little bit? Because I get more requests from district one than I did when I was at large. From my district one. And that's where I feel like a fifth district would be good, because right now, we as district representatives represent one-fourth of the city. And so a fifth district person could give people, a person that looks at them more than right now is larger number.
And 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 second point to that, too, is as it puts the onus on a council member, right? It's like, people call me because I'm their council member, because, you know, they pull up the map and they say, this is where I live, and that's my councilman. Even though you're that council member, you're that council member, you're that person's councilman, too.
I get plenty of phone calls.
What they're now requiring of me is for me to come to four of you or three more of you or all six of you and say, this is something that somebody's concerned about. And we wanna take action on this. And I have to log it for this person, and I have to bring it forward, because they only contacted me. Right? It's gonna be, it it's the same thing.
But that's no different than when I brought up catch. That's because they contacted me.
Right, then why didn't they contact four? And we vote for four, why didn't we contact all four?
Or why didn't they contact the district person?
It's not any different, is what I'm saying.
But but that's my point, Chad. Sometimes they call the district person, sometimes they call in a large person, like being more.
And that's not different, and that's not different whether you're, you vote for four, you vote for three, you vote for two, it's vote for one. And that's not different, that's that's still the same. I I get the argument, Chris made that argument all the time, too, but I I I understand the appeal there. I just think you, there's a bunch of other cities that don't do that, right? Mink Vale is a thirty-five thousand people, they got five districts. No at-large.
Yeah, and they have no districts.
Draper's all at-large.
Draper is all at-large.
So to that same thing, why don't we just go seven at-large?
Maybe enter game now.
Uh I don't like that. Vote for one a year, and we have seven-year terms.
Seven at-large. Well, you'd split them up and you'd have half.
And you have three of them, four.
Well, no, you'd have four and four, because the 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 mayors would be in the same election as the three. So you'd be electing four at-large people and four at-large people.
But I like the idea of having smaller districts that are close to the people who represent. I don't know, I like that. That's the feeling to me, I think.
How do you work it if you're, we're we're making a fifth district and we're retiring lines? Somebody doesn't within the, like, let's say there's nobody leading the rest within the boundary uh who's currently on the council.
It takes effect after the election.
So if if we were to redistrict. It wouldn't take effect. What you would do is you would do it so that all the filings happen next s- summer. But the the weird thing is, is getting, I I think that. The logistics of it, the logistics are weird, because once you're elected to a term, you're elected to the term. And so if you were elected at a at an at-large, and all of a sudden, your at-large is the one that goes to a district. Your, you still get paid for the number of years of your term. Like, just.
Yeah, I don't know if that applies, or if that only applies to change of form of.
There's a distinction, right, between changing with the form of government on a ballot where you can cut somebody's term short. Versus here, you're just changing districts in that order by ordinance, and you. You can't cut somebody's term short. You can only change the districts after they're equal.
I actually worked out a little spreadsheet to put out, like, which years you'd have to do which elections, the times, so that everybody who's already elected doesn't get any short change. But some people will eventually have to be elected for a two-year term to make it all line up. The simplest way is just next year, we have two at-larges and a fifth district.
In the twenty twenty-five election?
Yeah, we don't have time to.
No, I don't know. How would we redistrict then? We did a redistricting last year.
Doesn't take long.
Because Harper came after us as well.
We had to work with, we had to get the census numbers from the county, then we had to approve it with the precinct realignments and all of those things, right?
And we're in the middle of a presidential election.
Let me let me finish, though. We have, we we can, we would have to go off of the last census data.
Correct.
Right, we which we have. We have that number, because you drew up three or four different maps for us, right?
Right.
We could just, as easily as it was to draw those three or four, you could draw a new one with a fifth district, right? It's the same same process, the same software, I imagine, just drawing another circle somewhere, right? On the map. That wouldn't be hard. And then people file to run next year. If you live in that district, you can file for that district, or you can file for angry, just like.
I guess that's a conversation we'd have to have with the county and.
Right, cuz you're, you wouldn't know that information, how easy or not that is until you talk with them.
And I'll go back to, I'll go back to the at-larges that are here. Let's say they wanna run again, but now all of a sudden, that district five is gone. Or so now they're there, so the third at-large is gone. So now, they can't, they can't rerun as an at-large.
Sure they can. They just have to finish in the top two instead of the top three.
But it eliminates one of you.
The other option you have is in this uh staff report that uh your council staff did for you, where you. Elects a four-year and two-two-year at-larges, and you saw that option, right?
Yeah.
And then you don't have to deal with redistricting until the following. So I will tell you the difficulty. Of that is that at-large elections are not cheap.
Yeah.
And running an at-large election for two years. Is, I did that.
So is this is broken? Is it broken? Is there a reason why we're trying to fix some?
No, it's it's.
That's a good question.
Its original discussion is that the at-large seat is.
Eventually, we will, we will have.
But are we at that point of talking about a fifth district? Or do we need a couple more years?
There's nothing, there's nothing in the code or in the state law or anything that says districts have to be x-large. Like you have the, we could go seven at-large.
We could go seven districts, like. You do have all those legal options.
So I I'm just, I'm I'm still. It's gonna take a lot of time to draw a fifth district, and I'm just trying to hear why it would take a lot of time.
I don't have time before the next election, but that's just.
Why it would take a lot of time?
Well, a lot of that, I think what Tanji's saying correctly, if I'm wrong, is that a lot of those logistics are outside of her control. It's up to what the county is able to do and so forth. And then so she asks those questions, she's probably unable to answer.
What what did, what's the county's role in this?
The county has to read, they would have to read. Uh redist, they do all the work. County does all the work.
Well, yeah.
Redistricting.
They have the precincts, they have to align the districts.
Precincts are are set by the county. They're they're done.
We would have to draw our districts, i- if we were to do, I think where Zach's going is. We've got the RGIS software. And and we know the number, we know the number of registered voters, and we know where they live. Uh we know that.
I'm just saying, we draw precincts. I'm just saying, we re-organize existing precincts.
You're talking about taking the forty thousand registered voters or the hundred and twenty thousand people. And that'll be divided by four, that we ought, that each district represents thirty. And you're taking that one twenty and divide by five instead of divide by four. And use the existing precincts to come up with that.
The county's already done, they're having.
I think that's what you're saying, if I hear what you're saying. Instead of debating whether we have time left to do it, if you decide to do it, we'll make it work with the time frame. So don't make that part of your discussion on whether you want to do it or not. Make it what you think is the best thing to do, and we can make the time frame work. If you can take that off.
That's a good point. And our staff is amazing, they'll make it.
I don't, I don't think we're at a point yet. I think it's something to keep in the front heads. I think it's something that we need to look. For to as our city grows, but this moment in time, I don't think we're ready for the fifth district and changing everything. Because if we're gonna have to change things anyways, let's wait till a more appropriate time to do so.
Yeah, that would be the next census. That's the best thing someone has to.
And and so I think the valid question that you're asked. Besides what's broken, is. Is the philosophy of the current council. You get a vote for the majority of the people on the council. Or is. Do we have to wait eight years? This'll be about eight years. Um do we wait? Well, it'd be seven, seven years, because it'll be the twenty, it'll be the twenty. If we get the census data right, we'll fix it for the twenty thirty-one election. Um or do we, or is the trajectory of the city. The point that we think that we ought to have. More districts, and so we need to get on that trajectory.
But we can't base that off of the trajectory. We can't base anything until we have the next census. So for me, it makes sense to wait till the next census and then do the five districts. Because then we'll have that concrete stuff that we are legally obligated to use.
The thing that, the thing that makes me wanna do it now is what Kent brought. Okay, man, what you brought up in the in the ranked choice voting discussion. Is that you might get really mad and want to get somebody out of the at-large race, and you got the wrong person. And.
That really sucks, doesn't it?
It does. So, you know, and that's that's, that's that's the, it's it's just different philosophies. I don't say one's right, one's wrong.
Waiting until the next census. Like, that's not gonna, that, I'm not saying it's like. Yeah, that's not very many elections.
I guess how many is very many?
But it's not really not very many outside the end of the.
So I think right now we're seeing, it's all about philosophies.
Yeah.
And I think the majority of us aren't ready to change it next year. That's all.
I agree.
That's right. This is, then the five-two is something that will make itself have to happen.
I don't think so. I don't think there's anything that'll be different in.
Well, everything's.
Forty-five, we can sell four districts, and each district.
Jones Ranch, whatever it's called now, is all done.
We have a hundred different people. There's still no compelling reason to say. As there is a good answer.
I think absolutely, that'll be a need.
What's the lower?
District, district two, E, and four are gonna be way big that we're gonna have to make those adjustments.
Once, once, what's district, you know, three and four. Yeah, a balance, that the people, it's just. And then you and I would be in the same district.
You have to redraw a line.
You don't have to, it makes sense if you're adding a whole new district, make it a whole new district.
The 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 districts have to be, I think that, I think the. The, the, the districts have to be, I think that, I think the, the language is, is something similar to the. Districts have to be within a certain, substantially equal, they have to be within a certain percent.
I'm not saying we won't need to redraw the lines of the four existing districts, I'm saying there's not gonna be any more compelling reason in eight years than there is now. To have a different number of districts.
Because there's gonna have so many more people in the city, it doesn't make sense to have.
Is that twenty-eight thousand people per district is approximately the right number.
It feels like it.
Well, it feels like it doesn't, well, no, but ten years ago, it was sixteen thousand people per district.
Right, I'm saying, but with more people, it's more responsible.
We're adding a whole new district out there.
But it's a whole new district of now, we've already added a whole new district from fifteen years ago.
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying, but it's only gonna keep growing.
Right, and, but I'm, what I'm saying is, that's why it's a philosophical, it's not a numbers discussion.
So then you eventually go to all just districts because you've grown so much.
That's, that's what, that's that.
That could be an argument, absolutely.
But, um, I don't, I think you figure out what the right balance is and you strike the right balance. The right balance is four and three because you voted for.
Yeah.
And that's a perfectly acceptable philosophy.
Councilmember Whitlock. Point of being able to vote for the majority of the city council is, is, uh, I like that a lot. Um. So I guess my question is, could we keep things basically the way they are except just add the, uh. A, B, and C for the at-large seats, is that even possible?
I don't think there was numbers.
I don't, I just don't think it's feasible for the reason Tanji said, you have everybody with the last minute to decide who to file into.
That's what killed that.
An A D would work if it was different.
Now, if we raise, if we raise the filing, it'd be high enough and you're not.
Or cheaper if you filed, but by a certain. Bring a choice B's.
Really provide early file early just.
Everybody files, run at-large, and then they get randomly assigned to A B or Z.
Then that gets rid of what Kent was saying.
Then, yeah.
But we don't have that.
Yeah, I know, but I, I, I do see the point that if you've got A, B, and C all running at the same time. It, it, it might not work, but if they were staggered, it would work for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't stagger A, B, and C.
But the only way to do it would be to stagger.
Why now, this is the why now. Yeah, yeah, the only way to do it is stagger A, B, and out of the.
I think, I think you're right there, the only way is, if you're gonna go council, A, B, whatever. You, you can only do two.
Sort of, sort of rephrase the question then. Rephrase the question, because there's an appetite to go to council, A, B, for the sake of having council at-large A and at-large B. Because to do that, you're not.
And you have to move the others around the building because. You have to free. In the next year, you can have just.
Yeah, you have to redraw the line.
I did not have an appetite for that, and I think the biggest reason is, again, what. Councilmember Whitlock said of being able to vote. And if any individual in the city having the ability to vote. For a majority of the council members who are on, on the council, I, I think that's a really valid point, and I, I like that, so.
I just don't think this is so broken right now to make a change at this moment in time.
What, what was that?
Could've saved few hours.
Well, this item would normally be about thirty-five minutes.
Yeah.
I'm just feeling.
It's a good conversation.
Say most meetings.
I had a million dollar lens get found tonight, so I'm, I'm at a win.
Oh, good, good.
Like someone makes a million dollar lens.
Yeah, it was a million dollar R B.
Okay, so I think the status quo is the status quo.
Yep.
So far so good. All right, status quo shall ring.
Thanks, Tony.
Um, thinking of things that are broken. I see.
Just a Kent or Bob.
I don't need this, this is the Kent Bob. Discussion on the election of chair and vice chair, title one six nine.
But Ellen said you would introduce it.
Should we start with, uh, whether it's broken? Should we come to that?
Uh, well, Bob and I believe it is. Yeah.
There you go.
All right, so, uh, yeah, thank you, so. I'll just introduce it and turn it over to, to Bob and Kent, so back in January-ish, February-ish, they had come to the council office. Wondering if there could be some possible amendments to election of chair and vice chair, I said I would see what I could do. I put together some sample edits, amendments to the code. Had Patrick run through it, we created a little PowerPoint, it's just an example as a starting point. And with that, so I've got some examples in the PowerPoint of how an election would work based on what's proposed in the red line. But Barbara, Kent, I'll let you, uh, your item.
I'll, I'll start off just by saying, I feel like relationships on the city council are very important. And I value each one of you tremendously. And if I were to choose to run a council chair at some point in the future, it would be difficult for me to do that. Because then I'm saying to myself, or I'm saying to each one of the six of you. That I'm more qualified than somebody else, and that is a difficult position for me to take because I'm no better than any one of these, any one of you.
I'll be sure.
No, I'm not.
Well, you're mentioned as the talker for then, oh, thank you, five of them.
You had to actually figure out.
So, um. In talking with, uh, uh, Director Anderson about this. Uh, there was a suggestion of six months' terms. Because then maybe the sting is a little bit less if you are not elected and you're going for it. Because now you have a chance to run again in six months. I kinda like that, I had a whole different. Approach to this that just doesn't fly legally, and so I'm not even gonna talk about it.
Well, I think, I think it could fly, so. Uh, and I don't know, did you need to?
No, I'm, go ahead, go ahead.
And now I wanna know what that approach was.
Well, it might be the one I'm talking about.
Approach was in C one thirty, coming in with the wheels up.
So what, what, where that came from for me was, as we're getting ready and we're getting to the first of the year. I was getting notices of, all right, now becomes the hard part, because now everyone's gonna come at you for the chair and they're gonna want this and you're going to. You're gonna make some enemies, and as soon as I heard that, I was like, what? Why am I making enemies?
Yeah.
Um, why am I, uh, and maybe, you know, not necessarily making enemies, but I'm going to hurt feelings. Because people are gonna come to me, and I had three people come to me and want my, uh, want my vote. And I tried to be very upfront and say, I, my vote's gonna go here and this is why. Um, but that doesn't mean I don't like you or, or anything like that. But I'm trying to put this together, but then I thought, why are we doing this? Because it's not. It, it's not a position that should have the power that, like, like Kent was saying, that I'm better, it's not. The chair and the council, it's, it's all the council. So. The thought was, how do we take that and make it something so that everyone gets a chance to do it? And you don't have to worry about it. And my real thought was, if we could just set it up, that it's a rotating thing, that you just know. I'm going to be the vice chair, but then I'm gonna be the chair, and then I'm out for a little while. Until it comes in, unless someone wants to take themselves out of their rotation.
And my idea was similar to that, but we can't do that because of state law.
But if we voted each individual time, knowing that it was gonna be that, we still vote, which is what they want. My hope is that everyone gets a chance to be the chair for a little while, for whatever good and bad that gives to it. And it just, uh, my, like I said, my love would be a rotation, so I know that, well, in two and a half years. I will be chair, this gives me time to see what the chair does and learn what, you know, how to handle a meeting. But I'm going to get my chance, I don't need to let go, this is my one shot, and, oh, I didn't get it, and, well, now I'm, you know, now I'm, I'm out. But the, the thought is, six-month, uh, time of chair, like, it's, I think. Everyone a good chance to be in the chair, have that moment, and be there so that they can say that at some point. You know, I was, I was a council chair, I don't think any of us would do a, a bad job or any of us would do a better job. Than, than anyone in there, but I think it's something that is obviously important to people, to some people. And.
And there's some who might not want to do it.
And there's some that might not, that's what I'm saying, you could take yourself out of the, in the rotation.
Out of rotation.
As I, you know, I, I don't want it yet, I might not be ready, well, you're not gonna get a chance until later, that's fine, I'm, I'm just, I'm not ready to put me out. I'll run again for my election and see what comes up, but it gives that opportunity. Six months, I think, is, uh, is a good time to, to have the position and then to, to move on from it. I could be wrong that. I don't think it's something that takes a big lead-up into have the position. And then, you know, that's why you don't wanna change every six months, because there's so much of the training, education. But that's why I like the idea of the rotation, because the vice chair would always be the next person popping in the position, they would have that time. To be there, and then we're, we're in and out, and then you know that your time comes up again in a little while, but. The, the idea would be, in a four-year term, you know you were going to have a chance with it, and you didn't have to campaign to get it. If we could figure out a way to make that legally, the voting of that comes through, I don't wanna necessarily have to vote every six months. About this, because then we're almost at that campaigning thing again. Uh, I really want, it's my, I would rather just see that. We, we knew in advance, if there's a way that we could. Vote, uh, that, I, I don't know necessarily that, uh, takes care of what the legislature needs from us.
What, 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 what statute is?
It's ten, uh, ten-three-B, two-O-three, one-A, four states, the body shall elect one of its members to be chair.
Okay, shall what?
Shall let.
Whoopee doo-doo, we can elect any way we want.
That, that was my thought, and it'd be.
It doesn't, it doesn't dictate the manner of election, correct?
Yeah, I think the word election.
Well, but the, the.
Election is.
What, what I'm saying is, we, and so what I'm saying is. As I look at, at part of the draft language, what I'm saying is. There's nothing that would, because I, I know where Bob's going with the rotation, there was, there would be nothing precluding as the, the start of. Let's say a two-year term, because we operate two-year cycles, right? If we operated in a two-year cycle, that allows for four-chair and four-vice chairs, right? If we, uh, there's nothing that says that, that the start of the two-year term, that we can't elect. And we, we, we do it by numbers and, and it's like golf, the lowest person goes first and the second person and the third person and. You go down the list, and we've done an election and we've complied with state statute. I, I, what I'm saying is, when you guys say, well, state statute gets in the way. I can, I can do, we can do anything we want.
Council statute, maybe that's what.
That's interesting.
What do you think, Cat, too?
There, there's, there's nothing that I, we'd like rank them, like, like rank choice. Well, if you, if you read the, if you read the draft ordinance, it is ranked choice.
Definitely options.
So.
Choose. Sorry, I, I was just saying, one of the things that, that we've worked on with, with kind of some of the, the recommendations is. Is a different form of, of holding the elections, right, so we, we, you can make it however you want, you can, you can make it the structure that you want. If we've got maybe what we could call a preferential voting, as opposed to like a ranked choice or something that, that we put together. But, but you could use it in the same fashion to, um. To select, you know, just kind of the order that, that you want people to serve in, in the positions.
What I, what I will say is, when I talked to, uh, Mr. Frado, who's my counterpart in Sandy, they were at six months, they went to one year. Two, two years, I believe, and then the council decided to go back to six months of the four large cities that are in this former government that elected chair or vice chair. Three do one-year terms, one does six-month terms. Three of them, uh, use formal nominations, Sandy does not use a formal nomination, they simply pass out a paper. And they write it down, and whoever has four votes is the chair.
And the funny thing is, they don't eliminate somebody after the first round either, so they'll, they pass out.
And they do it again.
Write it down, and they, they collect them and they say, oh, Alan's got two, Kevin's got two, and, and Bob got three, let's do it again. And they don't say one's eliminated for the coin and do the top, no, it's just, pass them out again.
What I would love to see is, just that we just see a, a thing, maybe it's district one, one of the at-large, district two, one of the at-large, district three, one of the at-large, district four. And then, so let's say that we've got it all written out, but it's time for us to vote, but we already know that according to our little file. That Kelvin is going to be the chair and Chad is the vice chair, and then we, we all see it then, and then we all vote on it. We all just go, yes, 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 the voting was done, there was an election, it was, it was done.
I like where you're, I like where you're going, because I've been through three votes, and all three times. People on this table got mad at me because they didn't vote the way they wanted to. I'm not saying that.
Sean, I never got. Um, didn't take you to lunch the next day.
Yeah, but, I don't wanna say mad, but there were hurt feelings because the vote didn't go a certain way and. I didn't like that, and I get it, people wanted me to chair, so I like where you're going because. For me, the chair is not in charge of this council, they just run right. And I've been in leadership for six months, and have I done a great job? Maybe, maybe not, but I feel like I have, I've shown up, I've done what I needed to do.
This is on seven, but.
But only six is he really did.
But, what I, I guess what I'm saying is, I like where you're going, like, let's give him the hurt feelings and the, well, he didn't vote for me, so I don't like him, or she didn't vote for me.
That was my whole thing.
So, so maybe we do an assignment, and you, like you said, like, okay, these six months is district one, district two. These six months, it's at-large and at-large, et cetera, because that way, does change it, now. I don't know, Alan, six months gonna be a problem for your, for your, uh, office.
So, here's, here's the question, Patrick, and I'm gonna, I'm going to ask.
But then we hear the elections.
I'm gonna ask this question, because what we always do after we vote, is we pass a resolution. That says, here's the council chair. If we were to create an assignment, or something based on district and at-large. And we vote on the resolution, is that an election of the chair because we voted for the chair rotation?
I would, I would think that it would be. Um, I, I think that, I think the. You know, you're, you're, you're talking, I guess, kind of like a schedule, right, you're, 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 you're talking about scheduling out. Who's, who's wanting to be in the positions.
And if somebody didn't wanna be there, they drop out, we do the, we do the assignment, and, and we do the, we do the schedule for the next. Two years and the next year, or whatever the, you know, for example, two years, at the start of the two-year term. We do that, and the vote on the resolution is, yeah, we're adopting this schedule, this is how the chair is, that's our vote.
I, Josh may have a different opinion than me on this, but I, I would say that, that. I, I think the spirit of the, of the state statute, though, is to say this. The state wants the council to decide who's gonna be in the position, not anybody else.
Right.
It, it's not supposed to be left up to the voters, it's not supposed to be left up.
To the mayor.
To the mayor, it's not supposed to be left up to me, i- it, it should be up to the council to decide who's gonna write a meeting. And, and I think that that's, that's the heart of, of what is, is meant by, by that requirement.
And, and it is, and it is signing, it is running the meeting, setting the agenda, and signing documents.
I was just gonna agree with Patrick on that, the statute doesn't provide any specifics on elect, right? And I think the safest assumption is that if they don't provide specifics, it's because they didn't intend, intend to provide specifics. And so the discretion is in your hands to do that, now I think the easiest defense of. An action as electing would be to have some kind of a vote component that either ratifies the choice that you made. Or the. Or the proceeds it in, you know, some fashion, but I think as long as. There's a vote that's part of the process at some point, I think there's a room to make the argument.
We always do a resolution.
Tell you how we'll know. If we do it and the legislature passes a bill next session.
I think the other thing to keep in mind with this is, is this is a decision that is the councils and that primarily affects the council. And so the likelihood of a challenge coming to it, I think is pretty small. Uh, and so I think you can confidently exercise that discretion without a lot of concern that it's going to be, you know, criticized.
I've been thinking, I've been thinking through this and here's one thing that scares me about what you suggested. Is that gratification vote. So let's say that I want to, I want to be council chair and it's my turn on, on the schedule. And it comes before council be ratified and it's not ratified. That would be devastating to me.
And it would put us in a difficult procedural position.
Only half the big floor.
But I think if we adopted. And, and, and if we adopted a process. That we sit down at the start of the term or start of. A year, like this next year or whatever, we sit down and start. And we have a discussion in a meeting like this, right?
Can do it so closey.
We, we, we can, we, we could, we could, the first thing we'd say is. Who, who does, who has time, who doesn't have time? Do you have time now? Do you have time later? We can draw out a schedule and then if things happen. Pull out and slide it up. We, 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 we just amend the schedule and revote. Right? We have a resolution, we have the schedule, we amend it and we revote.
Well, part of the resolution can say if, if someone can't do it, that just moves up.
Yeah, yeah. Here's, hi, here's one more kind of tweet to that idea that I have, I, I thought of. I'm not saying it applies to anybody in the room, but someday and in the past, we've had council members that do things a little differently that kind of go off the rails. If we have a rotation and somebody gets into that position. Setting agendas, running meetings, you kind of, it doesn't sound like much, but it could be, right? Some of us were here for some of that. He wasn't chair, but he was on council. Uh, of course, we did the council too, but, but it was under a different title, but. But back in those days, there's some, there's some cases, so to mitigate that potential happening. Something like what the League of Cities and Towns does and a lot of these other boards where they have. Of their leadership instead of being two, a chair and a vice chair, it's three. It's a chair, a past chair and a next chair or a vice chair. So you have three in the leadership meeting, so then if you have a crazy, you cannot vote them by two more and you just. Now I'm pointing that general direction.
I'm teasing, sorry.
I was actually pointing at Warren. So that you have, so you have in your leadership meeting, you have three. And if you got one that's going rogue and it's on a schedule too, so you know who the next year is gonna be, you know who the past chair is gonna be.
And, and what that does is it puts you in the leadership for a year.
For three, oh, yeah, for a year and a half.
For a year and a half, but we broad things through and everybody gets a chance.
And not everybody needs to be at everything, that's one thing that I'm sorry, since we don't, you know. I have a lot of conversations with Alan that are, hey, you're the chair, can I do this? I say, yeah, do that, he does that. Whatever it is, we don't need convening on a meeting with Chad, me and Warren and Cindy and everybody, we sit around and talk about it. But if we do. Then, then mitigate the effect of having.
So just. It sounds like there's support to go to six month terms. One question I have is do you want to do assignments or do you want to do like random, pull names out of a half to pick chair and vice chair in a full year? So you're picking four names every January?
Maybe to set the schedule.
Yeah, actually, well, we just established it.
Pick three names.
You want to do chair, so first question is, do you want to do chair, past chair, vice chair?
That's what I would want.
Yes, I would like that a lot.
That's what they call them. Well, you know what? You could do what the county does and you could call them chair pro temp.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever you want, I don't know. Because the county, the county commission has got chair, vice chair and chair pro temp. Yeah, so you could do that and not necessarily. Call them the past. From chair to chair pro temp?
Yeah, yeah, I like.
I like that idea too because then if, like Chad might not have been here tonight because he was working on some AMC thing and, you know. And I was stuck in the capital, I was sure of it, make it on time, who conducts the meeting then? Well, you guys fight about it, right? So I, I, I don't even know, but that gives three. You have a chair, you have a vice chair and then you have a past chair.
Second question, six month terms?
Yeah.
We have four. Okay, third one, you want to just assign it or do you want to pull names? For full district, I mean, you're right, district one, district two.
Yeah, then we need to.
Let's go back to that.
We start this in January for a second. So now, because we're serving this year, the two of us out of the.
Well, that's, that's the question, and I would say no because currently the chair.
Say that Zach would go to.
He would automatically become past chair, there's no, there's no progression, ascension from vice chair to chair.
But what if we do that?
So what you're saying is you go, you would, you have a chair. So the rotation.
A vice chair.
And then chair pro temp and. Then the chair to go, chair pro temp, vice chair to a chair. And then somebody else jumps into vice chair.
Yeah.
And then we make that rotation go through the course of a two year term. This year would be the exception, we go through a year.
Right, yeah, this year's done, right?
Well, but I'm talking about this year starting.
This, this would be effective January twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
The, um, the, yeah, the, you said you want to be doing it for two years, right? This also gives you the benefit, by the way, of always having seasoned leadership in leadership.
Yeah.
Which is not that big of a deal, but it's a little bit of a big deal, but it's a continuity. Well, and, and now I'm just talking, talking about wild stuff and maybe we just start the rotation and it doesn't matter when the term starts. What happens if, let's just hypothetically say, um, and, and, and I'm gonna use this because he's the vice chair. Hypothetically, come January first. He becomes the chair that's district one, right? We need a vice chair, that's an at large person. Okay, then the next person in rotation is district two.
Yeah, that's right.
And then the at large person, and then the next person is three and an at large person and district four. And an at large person. I mean, I get to do it twice before I can just do it.
No, because you'll back out if that was your time.
But, but we, and, and that assumes that everybody wants to do it and then if somebody says. No, I don't want to do it, then we just cross them off and move the next person up.
The only thing is how do we decide which at large?
Right.
When you say it, ABC.
Well, we just do ABC, pull it out of the hat, right?
Yeah, just, just for the purpose of this.
We've got a RBC.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think.
Yeah.
Or I can do at large green, at large white.
You've never been a chair. And I just, there's, there's a chance that after, after one election, you know, this next election, that either. Never, never got that opportunity.
This is what.
This is what I'm trying to. So, so I just.
I just.
I just. I just know that I. Needed the fact that. I had to tell the people who obviously wanted the chair. The chair.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it if he didn't really want it, they were doing it because.
Because that's who I am, I don't want to, I don't want to go. I, I even didn't want to, didn't want to make the meeting. Do it over time. But, uh, but, but, but I did look at the fact that, and I, and I'm just being honest, that, that. I, I know in the conversation we had at that lunch, it was something that he wanted to do and I was like, look at this one. There's a chance he might not get it. And that's not why you go into public service to be told, you know. No, you didn't win the popularity vote in your own council.
Okay, so the last question I have, I think you have everything we need.
I do.
So do you want to review this at a future committee of the whole or do you just want to come back? To the, to a, uh, council meeting to look at it and adopt it so that we're ready for the tangularity?
Do you want, do you want the options or do we choose options?
We have enough consensus that we don't go straight to.
Six months to sign seats, vote on a resolution.
Alan, here's, here's my suggest. Because I noticed on this, on the, on the one, six, nine, there's a, there's an extreme liberal use of the belief. Keep on going and make one, six, nine, super simple.
Sorry.
Make one, six, nine, super simple, that basically says the election for the council chair and vice chair, um. We follow council rules or we, we, you know, something like that with a vote. With a vote at the end on a resolution of each state statute. And we, 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 we keep it that simple. And then any of the details that we want to do, we just put it in council rules. And that, that way if something doesn't work right. We can, we can go fix council rules without having to amend the ordinance, see where I'm going with that?
Right now it's the opposite, right? We have the rules to say.
Refer to one, six, nine, yeah.
Yeah, and it would, I think it would be better for the code to be simple and refer to the council rules.
So we'll, we'll work, I'm bringing the council rules to you in the near future, but we'll, we'll work on something, but I'll just plan to bring this back to the council. For ratification, adoption later this year sometime.
Can I, can I add, can I add two little amendments to this? One, one is the chair pro temp or the past chair.
Yep.
Doesn't have to attend all leadership meetings unless there's a tie that needs to be broken.
Or there's a crazy person in town.
Or, oh, yeah, in that case, there should be lots of ties, right?
The mayor has less ties.
And probably socks, I live with socks.
I think the chair pro temp could just be like when needed even. I don't think they need to be there.
You only have to be there.
The chair's probably chance chooses what meetings to attend.
There you go.
They're retired.
And then another thing that I've, since Al, Alan brought up the duties of the chair, can I propose one? Then we're gonna, just to think about, I don't care if we. How action forward goes and whatever, maybe talk about this in another view. But something to think about. We recently had this bond committee thing come up. And Alan was calling around saying, please wants council members on this, do you want council members on this? So which council members? And everybody said, yes, pick me or no. And it was kind of a similar kind of thing to what we're talking about right now. Can we assign to the duties of the chair that when there's an ad hoc committee that comes up and the chair just assigns it? And the chair can call around and say, hey, Kim, do you want to do it? If you want to do it, do it. If you don't want to do it, then I'll call up. But then nobody has to know, right? Nobody has to know that you weren't picked, I only call one person and I say, will you do it? And if you say yes, then I'm calling. Right? It doesn't, it doesn't matter and chair can try and make sure everybody gets turned or whatever. Um, these don't come up at all. And there's guys, I, I look at it as how the speaker of the house, and I texted a couple, friendly legislature, stick this, how they do it. When the speaker, when the house convenes and when the senate convenes, they always make this little ad hoc committee to go inform the senate, to go inform the governor that. The house is assembled, they're ready to conduct business, it's this sort of formal, hippity gay party and they nominate three people and. And it doesn't really matter who it is, right? Anybody can do it. But they say council, you know, representative, so and so, so and so, go inform the senate, you know, you know, or whatever, be like that. Like, it's just the chair thing.
I'm fine.
Sounds like we have four.
So you've got four. You got the five. I don't know if that.
We will, uh, we will draft something and bring.
I know, yeah, five.
Probably, probably October. Uh, for a council meeting and then we'll be ready for January.
Yeah, I think it'd be minimal, is minimal for that, but. It's a good discussion.
Ready?
It's like a fourth discussion. Is one on two E?
Sorry, you did all your train.
Oh, we didn't even get into the trains, that's all right. It was fun to me.
Hey, we derailed your train. And, and Alan can't stand it when we derail trains.
They were.
Let me do it, yeah.
We don't want to start all around. Alan, we've already been there and done that, we don't want to buy the.
Alan, go down, down for next, yep, yep.
All right, council, um, by the way, this is discussion on proposed twenty twenty five annual meeting schedule for city council and agency boards.
For twenty twenty five, so what I've done is I have created, uh, this is. Twenty twenty five, but it's using what we've used in twenty three and twenty four, which is the three meetings a month. I've, uh, the, the way the, the code, not the code, the council rules is include holidays and all those kind of things. But there's a couple of things that I'd want to bring you up to speed on. Number one, you can see when the legislature begins on January twenty first. And it ends on March seventh. Uh, another one I want you to look at is June twenty twenty five, you'll see the sixteenth is a holiday and the nineteenth is grade. Sixteen is year two, but unless the legislature. The sponsor has indicated that they would like to just make it like the rest of the country. And so there's a potential that it'll be on the nineteenth, so just kind of watch that, but right now state law is Juneteenth is the sixteenth on Monday. Stampede is tentatively the third, fourth and fifth. I also want to draw your attention to August twenty sixth and November eighteenth, those yellow circles are board of canvas dates. So I just figured that we would move the meetings to Tuesday on those nights. Uh, so that you can do the board of canvas and then go into city council meeting afterward.
By the way, I didn't bring church lighting on.
That's correct. Um, there is the city conference with the National League of Cities, March tenth through twelfth. Uh, the ULCT St. George Conference, uh, is expected to be the sixteenth through the eighteenth of April. We don't have dates for September, I won't get that till later.
Probably gonna be September third, fourth, fifth, I think, if it's like this year.
And then the other thing I wanted to point out is, and you can change this, uh, you can't, cannot get the budget from the mayor prior to the first regular meeting in May. So whenever you make a meeting in May is when you can get the budget from the mayor.
That's a simple resolution that says we get the budget in a different date.
Uh, to May, it needs to be in May.
Yeah, but we can hold a meeting on May seventh, just to.
That's correct, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, in May, what I've highlighted is your first meeting, which is the fourteenth, if you want to change that, that's great. Um, you have to approve it by the twenty seventh or tentatively approve the tentative budget by the twenty seventh if you decide to go through truth and taxation. So I just highlighted some of those, the yellow highlights are holidays. Um, but that's, so this is repeating what we're currently doing. So for example, January, the meeting would be the eighth and the twenty second with committee of the whole on the fifteenth, the twelfth and the twenty sixth, committee of the whole on the nineteenth. There's no committee of the whole in April, so it doesn't conflict with the league. Uh, and I have not traditionally put a committee of the whole in December just because everybody's kind of busy. Still gives us ten committee of the holes. Um, some of you have asked for an option B, which I also created. This one, and this is obviously, this is just to discuss. Uh, this option B, uh, I also failed to mention the legislative executive annual retreat is the seventeenth and eighteenth on both calendars. This one combines, the committee of the whole would start in the afternoon is what I would say, this says three o'clock, I'm just saying in the afternoon. Um, and then city council would start at six thirty, but you're down to two meetings. Uh, a month, same holidays that is what was there before. Uh, you see the board of canvas on the twenty sixth and the eighteenth, there was also discussion, would it be beneficial if we moved council meeting to just be on Tuesdays and not Wednesday? I don't have a calendar for that one, um, one advantage that. I don't have a calendar for that one. Um, one advantage that, what are the stresses that we're running into in the council office is this meeting has six items on the work session. Last meeting, I think, had five. Next meeting has six items on.
It's taking a month to get to them.
It's taking a month to get to those. We're getting six, and you'll be three or four hours tonight.
We have them planned out through November.
Uh, we're outputting things into November, so the council staff and administration could have some more time for committee of the whole with the number of things that we're bringing up. This is just an option. It's not the option to do that. This would, this would give you, uh, from six, three to six, it would give you six hours a month for work session. Where right now, we're doing about three, so about double.
A lot of us can't make three o'clock.
I, I understand that. That's why this is just for talking. Um, many cities, which I think are on the RCA, um, that Warren helped me grab or help grab for this. Um, so like city starts at noon or two o'clock, depending on what they have on their load. Provo is the same thing. Um, some cities that can't, they meet every week, uh, week one through four. Uh, one week is a work session, one week a city council, one week a work session. My ask, uh, as your staff member, uh, over at the office of the city council is we could use more time for work sessions. This, uh, one meeting a month is not, uh, enough to get things done. And like I said, we're already loading up November right now. And we're gonna be starting in January here pretty quick. I think we've already got three or four items for November.
You haven't got a couple of varsity days yet. If we still have varsity.
So, so that's, that's what I need you to balance out. And I recognize that some can't make the afternoon work exactly at three o'clock. Um, so, and then the other thing that the council asked, um, is did it work?
Oh, yeah, it was lagging.
Is the council asked that we have regularly scheduled redevelopment agency board meetings, and I've worked with Mr. Dobbins. Uh, and what we've planned on is once a quarter, you can meet more frequently, less frequently, but you wanted to have regular discussions of what to do with the redevelopment areas within the city of West Jordan. So these are the calendars you can keep doing, uh, you can keep with this one. I would simply ask that maybe if there's a light council meeting, the JAD committee of the whole, if that's what you wanna do. This is an option, recognizing that some of you can't make it. I know, uh, council member Lamont indicated three doesn't work for him.
Four o'clock is the earliest I can.
Four, others maybe need five or five thirty. So.
I have a job. I work full time.
We all have jobs.
So anyway, yeah, I work full time.
It's easy for you to say it.
I, I have a boss who literally goes, why did you leave at four fifty eight?
It's easy for you.
I'm like, I'm sixty, I'm an adult, I'll leave.
Oh, but we also got a budget and get paid for this.
So we got elected, you know, you're scheduled.
Yeah.
So anyway, this is for twenty twenty five. Normally elections have to be at three o'clock.
Just throw out a couple of thoughts for my two cents. I would like to love the institute days, um, because of board of canvases is always on Tuesdays. Truth and taxation is always on Tuesday because most of the people are on Tuesday. They just assume that we're also doing it on Tuesday, but we're not. And so it always throws off my calendar. And don't even get me started on what day of the week I think it is every day, and I get up morning on those weeks, I'm gonna make it on Tuesday. It just throws me off my whole present. It's just one of those things, I can't even just labor it. So I would like to move to Tuesday. The council used to meet on Tuesday fifteen years ago. They moved it to Wednesdays because your school district started meeting right there on Tuesdays. And they said, well, we should have better communication with the school district, so let's go, let's not meet on the same.
Mayor Johnson was attending Swanage at the school board meeting.
Yeah, so even on the Wednesdays.
And there's, if I can just add, there's outside entities that this council sits on that meet on Wednesdays because the assumption is city council is on Tuesdays.
Right. And not every city council meets on Tuesday, but most of them do. I think.
Mill Creek is Monday.
What's that?
Mill Creek is Monday.
Family night, okay.
Wait until we join Monday evening.
Nothing else I'd rather do. Um, bring them all down. Keep your, come with me.
I'm cool with Tuesdays.
I'm fine with Tuesdays.
So anyway, that's the reason why I like to meet for Tuesdays. As far as the schedule, either the three meetings or the two meetings, or two meetings. But recognizing kind of the, the habit we've got to do with having these kinds of discussions separate from organized meetings. We want those accomplishments. It's the Kayleen Whitlock meeting is what I'm gonna call it, the memorial Kayleen Whitlock work session meeting. Uh, I, I, I see no, I, I, I see there's boundaries there. Never thought you'd hear me say that. So the three to six and then the six, I would, I would almost rather see it be like four thirty or five to seven thirty or eight and start the council meeting at eight. It's a little crazy.
Doesn't work for the people that.
Yeah, that's.
But, but the better the work sessions are, the shorter the regular meetings are. So even if we start at eight, not nine, nine thirty.
That's the theory.
Uh, well, it's all.
I think eight's a little late for the residents.
Right, yeah.
About seven.
Seven, Mike.
I just feel like six might be too early for some people.
I've, I've thought that, but I figured, like, this is.
What if we move citizen comment to work session? That's what Sully County does. They have their citizen comment for work session.
Well, now he's making up for work session.
It doesn't take that much time. It's usually public hearings that take up all the time.
Yeah, that's true.
But I hear what you're saying, but.
No, we're required.
We need more time for work meetings, meeting from four to seven, exactly. I guess that gives us the three hours, so and that gives us. People may have any more though.
I can figure that out. I'm hoping to change my job.
I mean, everybody, everybody can or can't at any given time, right? But I'm self-employed right now, can self-employ right now. Who knows? But I may not be self-employed a year. I, I, I can say, I can say right now that I can do it, yeah, but in your.
And in my previous job, I couldn't ever be here that early.
I know, but like today I can't, but I'm hoping by twenty twenty five I can, so, but you don't know.
I guess all things considered, my preference would be Tuesday nights, but the.
What we need is an agency choice.
So.
And I'm okay with every Wednesday or every Tuesday at this point.
Yeah, that Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday on Goodwood. Let, let's start with this. How many are okay with Tuesday night?
It just, it just means that.
There, we, we. We should run staff by Tuesday.
We can make it work.
This is the one that it's fine. We'll, we'll adjust what your schedule is. His planning, planning commissions are on.
Yeah, we're gonna have the two twenty.
Yeah, Tuesdays.
Are they on the, are they on the second of?
They're on, planning commission's on the first and third Tuesday, so the only, well, right, it would work except for, um, board of canvas. In, in, uh, possibly, and then November, December, when you guys shift to the first and third week. If it's on Tuesday, then we would conflict with the planning commission in November and December.
If we get ours set, then they can set theirs, right?
Yep.
Not that, we got more adjustments, we got new ones, people, fully adjusted.
They can plan for it.
Or adjustments is very adjustable.
Ooh.
We are the board of adjustments, adjust.
Wow.
So, yeah, are we, we're all good with Tuesday?
Yeah.
So apparently none of his schedules are gonna help us, cause they're all.
So here's, here's my two cents.
What I get.
And I know the mayor's gonna jump in. I think we have to go to uh, uh, my preference is to go to two meetings a month and start over again. Because I've heard too many things from too many employees. No matter, no matter what the mayor says about his staff being flexible, that what we're doing is we're making employees work, work late, and morale is suffering. If we can get through most of the committee as a whole before five o'clock, before six o'clock, I think if we got done by six o'clock, that would be a major start with the, the staff, right? And so if we started, not that I'm a fan of, but if we started at four and we went till six thirty, that two and a half hours, that gives us five hours a month of, um, work session. Councilman, I've gotta check there. I wasn't going to, but I will. So this is your, this is your meeting. We will do. Justin.
There you.
I did jump early. I was behind you. We, you do what makes you work. You're the elected officials. We're gonna do it. We're here. Serve you in your position. Mayor, and, and I, mayor, I.
You reported, did you?
Mayor, I appreciate that. Question, question is, um, in, in one perspective, if, if we dictate what the entire city does, is that pay a lot of the dog? And, 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 no, you are the one dog. Well, I know we're elected, but we still have.
What makes it work for you?
You, you know, and I did that, but you know, the leadership doesn't say I screw every other subordinate over because that's what I want either.
No, I want to let you do that.
So you know where I'm going with that.
And you know where I'm going. You do what you could do to make your part effective. You're the part type one, but you're elected. You do make you effective, and we will help you be effective.
I have, I have a name. Okay, let's say we do the two meetings a month. For a city our, uh, as big as we are, we need still not have enough time for work session. What if we do something like an optional, if there's a fifth Tuesday of the month, we have the option of doing a work session on a fifth Tuesday of the month?
I've always said add a meeting if we need to.
Yeah, like if we, if we open up the calendar to say, yes, we're gonna do two meetings a month, we'll start at four, but if we need an extra work session, we should have ability to add that to the calendar.
I think that's right. So let's just look at the calendar.
Yeah, we need to make that. But like, well, well, cause there's several.
April has, April has, April has five Tuesdays. June, there's four.
July has five Tuesdays.
September does.
Your four year. I, I.
And December.
What you're saying. What about if we add the fifth Tuesday? You do two meetings a month, but every fifth Tuesday month.
Right.
We have a pressure valve.
Four times a year.
Yeah.
And you gotta come back. When we add a meeting, it's usually because of budget.
Yeah.
At least that's what it was before.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and, and, and obviously, if you're talking about budget season, July gives us an extra meeting for budget if we did that. So.
And September gives us the catch up with some of the RCA's that we weren't able to during budget.
Budget. So if we were to do two meetings a month, start at four, go till six thirty, start the citizen, then start the regular meeting at seven. Seven would be reasonable, and seven may actually be more reasonable for residents because they're not fighting to get home or fighting traffic or those kind of things. So if we did four to six thirty, we have a drop dead time of six thirty. So that we have time from here to go in there and get set up. And we do that.
Can I say we don't drop dead very?
Well, you know what I mean, but, but you know what I mean is that we'd have to have a drop dead time.
Could we make that?
We could wiggle, we could wiggle room a little bit, but when we would do, when we did it before, we started at five thirty and we were, we were only going an hour and ten, hour and fifteen, and it was terrible. So if we started at four, went to six thirty, we could cheat if we needed to to go to six forty. But we did that. And then we started the regular council meeting at seven.
Stuck me out, but I would make it happen if that's.
If we could do that, then that would give us five hours a month of work time. If, if the meeting ended up being short, we needed to carry the session, we'd carry it over later.
Yeah, you always add on to the end.
Always add on to the end, but then we pick up those four fifth Tuesdays during the year. Ones for budget, September would be the catch up.
It's not always gonna be in those same months.
No, but for next year.
For next year.
And, and you know, next year it's probably August. It's got August and October, it's got the fifth Tuesday. Whatever, if we did the, if we had those four meetings and we scheduled them, we can put stuff on it. If there's nothing to put on it, we cancel it.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna be blunt here for a second, cause I kinda feel like you told me, just get the time off. We are not full-time elected officials. We're not forty hours a week. I have to have a full-time job or I can't pay for my house, my food, et cetera. So my job comes first. So that's why I said four o'clock will work for me. I understand that you can get off earlier, but I really was not happy when you said, just get it off. It's not that easy. I don't wanna lose my job because I'm doing a part-time job at the city. Was I elected? Yes, but the people that elected me didn't say Chad gave me the, at the city at three o'clock. So I'm not mad. I just wanna reiterate and be blunt, but this is not a full-time job. If I got paid a hundred thousand a year and full-time a year, then yeah, I'd be here three every day, or I'd be here at eight o'clock every day. So I just wanna be aware, and this is not just next year, this is moving forward, and we have maybe three new people that are gonna be elected. Can they be here at that? So, and looking out for having to, because now I have a job where, yeah, she can get off sometimes. I'm the same way. Four o'clock is going, is going to work. Am I happy with it? Probably not, but I'll make it work, but I just wanna make sure that we're looking at this. Starting early sounds great if you don't have to be the job.
My anxiety is raising quite a bit, just trying to figure this out for next year if we're doing four o'clock.
Yeah, cause you didn't run thinking you'd do that for.
None of those did.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying.
And that goes to.
Yeah, that's another. That didn't run thinking it'd have three meetings either, I mean, that's me.
That's true. That was foisted upon me when I was on vacation. The, the other philosophical point that kind of dovetails into this is I, it's kinda like the filing fee I voted against it the first time. Is I don't wanna make it harder for anybody to serve on city council.
Yeah.
I want, I want the field to be as wide as possible for potential people. And if you're making it on Southland City where you have to start at noon, that limits who can serve. You may have some very talented people who do the great city council people, but now can't do it.
No, that's what we get paid. They're, well, that's not a full-time job either.
And I, no, it's not.
We talked about that next, hang on.
I also, I mean, I take your point, but I also think that Councilmember Green's point is very valid. We need to be respectful of staff as much as possible.
Right, like, like the mayor said, staff will, staff will adjust.
And I also know we need to be respectful of our citizens who are in a growing city, and we have a lot of stuff on our plate that we have to get to, and we haven't been able to. And I, and I'm saying this as someone who would stress out next year at a four o'clock start time, but I also know that the needs of our city comes first. So it's, it's, I see all, I see, yeah.
It's a joke. You know, we used to go till eleven, twelve o'clock at night.
But that did serve as anybody, because by the time eleven o'clock at night, we're making poor decisions or we're rushing through them.
I don't know that, oh.
Oh, yeah, we are.
I think she's right. Well, I have, I think you guys make work sessions. I don't know about me.
Well, and, and one of the things that council, last council, this council has said is you wanna hear more from the public. And when the public comes to speak, kind of where this three and six thirty came from is you could still get work done. Um, and the public, they're dealing with homework, getting kids to bed, feeding dinner, shopping, you know, whatever it might be. It's hard for them to stay till ten or eleven. You know, when I, when I served on the council, we were here till ten or eleven, twelve o'clock at night. You would always see people screaming out, even before their item was heard, because they were, they, they couldn't wait anymore.
That will always be something. It doesn't matter what time it is. You're either dealing with commuting home or you're dealing with doing homework, it gives the best. Or, or whatever. It's always gonna be. Only we had a twenty-four hour email and phone number of people in college, neither college or no. Oh, wait.
Nine.
Oh, wait, we do.
I think, I think seven is a fine.
I think so, or I kind of agree with that.
So, so what I'm understanding is I have seven hands raised up for Tuesday. Two meetings, if I understood, two meetings starting at four o'clock for work session to six thirty, council meeting starting at seven.
With the extra Tuesdays.
With the fifth Tuesday being a work session.
Are we making that?
Well, not the next.
Are we solidifying it?
The months with the fifth Tuesday, one of those states.
Are we solidifying the Tuesday? Yes, or is it a make?
I'd say put it on the schedule.
It would be, it would be easier to put, for us, it would be easier to put it on the schedule as part of the annual, I mean, I'll, cancel it than it is to get either the mayor or two of you or the chair and vice chair to call a special meeting. Cause, cause like, when we're put it into the agenda management system, people can lob stuff up. If I say, well, January's full, we can go and put one in April. Well, January's full, we can go and put one in April.
But that's, whatever Tuesday, that whatever month has the fifth Tuesday, we will not start at four o'clock. We would start later.
Can we say six o'clock on that fifth Tuesday?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will get for the, hopefully the next count, uh probably the. Trying to think. It'll probably be, I can maybe try and get on September eleventh just to adopt the calendar.
So here's, here's a question. I'm gonna ask it. Then you can throw the darts at me. Uh, the mayor will throw the darts.
Have darts, but I got some bottles.
She's got some bottles. Do we want to meet? On Tuesday, May sixth. It would be a seven o'clock meeting only. For the sole purpose. Of receiving the budget. We, that way we get the budget a week early. That meeting is like what we did at Public Works where. Everybody goes to the budget, this is what we wanted, yada, yada, yada. We go through that. So that, starting the next week on the thirteenth. We jump into the budget stuff, but we got the budget a week earlier.
I'm not just ask, I'm just asking that question.
I like that idea.
I actually really like that idea.
I don't have any plans on May sixth right now, so.
I may have a hair appointment that day.
Oh, yeah, me too.
I always do on Tuesdays.
But at six P M?
No.
But on that one, that one will be just another regular meeting at seven o'clock. Would just be a seven o'clock meeting just to receive budget and that's the only thing on the agenda. Corbin, Rob and I all have a hair appointment that day.
Yeah.
I don't know, it was just.
It was only a three.
No, I'm actually really, I think that's great.
Okay, so. Four to six thirty work session, seven. City council, second and fourth Tuesday. Fifth Tuesday at six o'clock, if we have something, I remember, answer it if there's nothing. And a regular meeting on May seventh with the only item to receive the budget.
May sixth.
May sixth. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Tuesday, May sixth to receive, at six to receive the budget. Is that?
Yes.
Is that what I?
I thought we said it's like. But I don't care.
I, I was just saying it's a regular city council.
All right, so for consistency, we'll just say seven. Cindy has a question.
So I just know, and I really don't wanna bring this up, but I just noticed that there's five Tuesdays in December. Are we talking about that?
I would say no in December. That would be my ask because.
Okay, okay, no on that one.
Yeah, I.
So just the three fifth Tuesdays.
Yeah, don't schedule the one on New Year's.
That is New Year's.
New Year's Eve.
All right, so I think we've got everything and we'll bring that back to you. We have one more topic.
Yeah, we have one more topic. Oh, council compensation.
I'm just that one.
And this is politically charged, but we'll, um.
No.
We got some ideas.
I think we'll do this one. All right, so it's been nine years, would be going on ten next year. Uh, since there was a change in the council compensation. So obviously, as council members, it's all hard to say, give me a raise. Especially when you're running for office and people worry, say, well, he gave yourself a raise. So what I'd like to do is set something, and I looked at the notes from last time, and there was actually discussion of making it a policy. And so I like a policy so that you don't have to be the one that says. Kent, Kent's the one that asks for a raise every four years or every eight years. Um, and the policy that I've seen in other cities is whenever the compensation of the mayor is done.
Yeah.
The, the uh, council gets a percentage of that.
Yeah.
Uh, solidating is twenty-five percent. I'm not sure what the others are. Um, so my thought is. We could do the same thing with the mayor, because the mayor's done it every four years, right? So that way, when the mayors have done. Ours just follows the twenty-five, twenty-eight percent or whatever we, we choose to do. I think right now, twenty-five percent is probably too much as I do the numbers. Uh, but where I think twenty percent is probably more in line with what we need to do. Um, so what I'm asking tonight is, is there a feeling to set a policy? So a policy that's politically charged every four or eight years when decisions are made or. You know, obviously, it's been almost ten years since it was even discussed before, before you were on, right?
I, I agree. And the longer we go without having the discussion, the figure or more the issue is gonna be as this, this.
It went from eight hundred and sixty dollars a month to fifteen hundred dollars a month last.
Yeah, so let's not do.
And I think tying the salary to the mayor is the, the best way to do it.
Here's, here's where. If I were going to pick a rate and do what I would do. I would pick twenty-five percent of the mayor's salary. That works out to be about thirty-two thousand dollars a year, but we eliminate health insurance benefits. Because then that fixes the cost.
But you can say that because you have that option. Other people don't have that option in health.
How many other part-time jobs on the planet have health insurance?
Zero.
That's right.
This isn't really a part-time job.
And Chad just said it was, so.
I'm not, I'm not even self-conscious saying it is a part-time job. He's right.
I, I don't think it's a part-time job because there's not, there's never a moment that I'm not.
And I don't vote against any pay raise. I won't support any pay raise.
That's fine. I, I want to just add one thing to what Chad's proposing. Cuz I, I like that, but instead of discussing the mayor's salary every four years, I wanna do what Taylor's go does. Let's set it and forget it. As opposed, so what Taylorville does is they, they set it in two thousand eight at like seventy-five thousand or something like that. And they said, whatever the COLA increase is that the council wants to give to the staff or to the, the city. All the employees, that applies to council mayor salary too. Two percent, three percent, whatever we give to anybody. We said that we say on, as of January one, twenty twenty-five, the mayor makes this much, council makes this much. Plus whatever COLAs the city gets in years going forward. Then it's never talked about again. And we don't have to have this. Almost fifty-three thousand dollars G N.
I, I won't be supportive. I think that, for me, this is a service that you do. For me, it's no different than serving on the Utah State P T A Board where I paid money to be there. It's so, I, and at twenty percent of the mayors, really? That's a lot of money.
What's that worked out to be twenty-seven?
Uh huh, twenty-four, right?
Well, I will tell you, Draper went to twenty-four, but they eliminated your health insurance because of it.
Like I take health insurance from the city. But, um. The. It's not really fair to members of the city council who do not take health insurance. Because they're in effect receiving less compensation than I. Um, so, I think, uh. Councilmember Greens does have a point. Um. But if we were to do that, compensation should go high enough. That each council member who does choose to continue taking health care by paying into it. Wouldn't have to take a pay cut to do so.
Corbin, I have a question. As far as, um, other full-time staff in the city goes, that have the option to purchase health insurance through the city. If they don't. What do they get?
Yeah, there's an opt-out provision. I think it applies. Yeah, yeah, there's an opt-out provision. Uh, basically, the city benefited by. Any employee that doesn't take health insurance, because we're insuring fewer people. So we, if you have another alternative to access health insurance from a, a spouse's employer or whatever. We wanna give you some incentive to access that health insurance rather than just double up. On the city's health insurance if it's not needed. So it's intended to be enough money to be an incentive. Opt you out, but it's not a full replacement for the cost.
See, and I would, I would suggest that.
Well, we already kind of do that.
If it's not broke. Why break it?
Well, to me, it is broken because I get paid from the city much more than councilmember Green gets paid.
So why is that, why should that be different for the city council than for the majority?
Good question.
We don't treat anybody else as a safe area. It's a, it's a benefit because it's called a benefit, not compensation.
The state sees it as compensation. If you look on the.
Yeah, they have a separate column, right? They have a, you can just call them and then they have.
And then they also have a total column.
Yeah. Because it's an expense. It's a budgetary. But it's not a compensation. I don't go home richer. I can't go buy more stuff.
But you do cost the city a lot.
But it's just like.
And that's not, that's our personal thing, told you that.
It's just like any other job, though. There's, there's a job that has methods.
Percentage, yeah, twenty-five to twenty, they not work a good percentage and tie it to the mayors. I just think that's always something that works out. That's and easiest and, yeah, we can keep it so it's not a huge.
What do you think about just tying it to the city's call increase? The city's goal.
So the city does that.
Taylor's another.
They, 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 all the, the ma, well, the mayors, just like you said, but. The way that I read that page, Alan, that solidly city's entitled. Somehow they're entitled merit increases. I'm not sure I understand that one.
I think if you're re-elected, you work more, right?
I don't know how the city council gets merit, but okay. If you set the salary. And then have, and then it's just based on the COLA every year, both the mayors and ours. Pretty, pretty easy to calculate that and changes, but it doesn't change substantially. Like the eight hundred, eighteen hundred.
It's, it's kinda like the truth indexation that we've been doing for the last few years. It's just kinda let it go with inflation with.
At one point, we discussed, and it was in the notes, and I don't remember which meeting it was, but at one point, we discussed having a citizens committee decide.
Yeah, I saw the notes. It was, it was talked about, but it was never.
Yeah.
Right.
It was never even talked about.
Nothing was decided, but it was discussed, and I would favor that. I think that's a.
Provo does that. Provo has a citizens compensation committee that discusses all elected.
But all you do is look at all.
How often?
I'm sure that all they do is look at all, look at the statewide spreadsheet and decide where Provo ought to be in the middle. Now, just remember the last time we had a citizens committee looking into something important, the city council narrowly dismissed the citizens committee recommendation. I'll have a strong mayor. They said, don't make a strong mayor. Strong.
Well, I agree that we need to do something. What the direction is, obviously it's up to us, but I think something does need to be changed.
If you don't do anything, if we, if you, if you. You sweep me under the rug because you don't want to vote for, or a pay increase or, or whatever. Politically speaking, I, I get it, but eventually it does become.
It's gonna catch up to us.
It does become a ball on a different mission.
Yep.
And then you got fewer people applying for it. And fewer, fewer, fewer every time because it's worth less and less, less. George Washington said that, that elected officials should be compensated so they're less likely to take bribes.
And I do agree with you.
We can take.
That we did. I agree with you on that. However, I will say in the past twenty years, I haven't heard of one council member that says, I don't want that many.
Right?
I mean, we, we spent a lot of time doing council stuff. We ought to be. Yeah.
Yeah, I think you mentioned solid city making fifty-five thousand. You also mentioned that they start a meetings at noon, so.
Right.
Yes, they do.
They're three fourths, they're three fourths then.
Yeah.
So I, I think that they're, they're having another meeting next week. I'm actually thinking they're talking about voting for time and. Having a vote.
They are?
I think they, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm.
Aren't, aren't larger cities have full-time council members?
Los Angeles has like fifteen full-time.
Los Angeles, which we're not.
They have, they have fifteen city council members. They're paid about a hundred and seventy thousand a year. They have city council meetings every Tuesday, Thursday and Friday.
Just not anymore.
I know.
Might have been true before, but that's not true anymore.
Well, I don't know. I've heard in legislature a million times today, we don't wanna be like California. Apparently being. Whether Disneyland is not something we want.
That is, okay, so what is, what's? It sounded like we have an appetite for five and bring it back, um.
I would, I would propose making it setting at once and then working the columns. That's, I think that's the best.
I, I agree with that.
Okay, that's three.
Yeah, I've never heard of that saying.
Five. Okay, so five. Set it. That's twenty percent with, is that what you're saying?
I, I said twenty percent.
At the beginning.
I think twenty-five is too high. And I think fifteen is too low.
I think fifty-five is too high, but I think well, that's okay.
Twenty is good with the four, yeah.
All right. And that, and then the last thing is an effective date.
That's a tough one.
January first.
Okay, so that is then going to include a budget amendment.
We'll just take it out of council contingency.
The line that you just started in June, then when you're virtual.
That's, that's a professional.
How about the, I'm just, you may not like this idea, but I wanna throw it out there. What if we make it effective?
I was trying to make it effective with the COLA for the mayor. So then the mayor's COLA starts January first.
Say, finish that thought, Ken, could I, I like.
What if we made it effective after each of us have been through one election cycle?
I, I wouldn't say each of us, but I'd say the next election.
You, you, I think, I think your options are January first, twenty twenty-five, July first, twenty twenty-five. Or January first, twenty twenty-six, if you wanna wait for an election.
Yeah, well, our options are whatever we want.
I'd be in favor.
But remember, I mean, yes, there'll be three new at large or maybe not three new at large. But the four of us, we're not on a lunch cycle, so.
So ours will wait until.
So what's the point?
So, so what I would, the compromise in between the two would be, I would think you apply the COLA starting in January next year. But then you, you do the big compensation, the twenty percent part.
Don't we apply COLAs July first on the, on the payroll?
It's just compensation like each budget year.
Backdate it six weeks.
I think you should do it.
There are losses on this.
This will require a public hearing, by the way.
Mm-hmm.
Of course.
Then I would say to make it easy with the COLA, that's July first.
We could all do it first, yeah.
That way it's.
Sorry, I was, I was thinking on the yearly and I, I was thinking the COLA will turn January.
No, the COLAs in July, that July first, that's essential, and it's blinking with everybody.
But the staff will pair your direction is, is twenty percent of the mayor's salary with COLA. Starting July first, twenty twenty-five. There won't need to be a budget amendment, but you are correct, we'll need a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah. But now, but that will allow it to be included in the budget. The budget public hearing.
Right. Now, will this have to happen every year with the compensation?
You have to have a public hearing on the compensation, just like you did this year.
Okay.
It would be a public hearing. They will now.
We had to do ours.
Yeah.
Even though we didn't change.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get that prepared and get that back to you shortly. And that's everything. I'm sorry, that's your call.
That's everything that's on the agenda for tonight. I put a little catch-all thing in case I could think of anything that we can cover and I can just. Cover something.
That was a good meeting.
Well, well done, and look, we've got three hours and ten minutes.
For six items, I might add.
So, anybody?
You to adjourn?
There you go, gotta motion to adjourn, taking it on February six. Yes.
Yes.